Afternoon, Brian.
Hello.
Here we go.
Probably twelve for social wins of the year.
Twelve, alright.
Begin, yeah, like in.
Well, sure.
At least, well, I've been in there so many times.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
You know Tony?
Hello.
Yeah. Yeah, you know Tony, yeah. Yeah, and yeah, probably at least that, and we got one offer with another one probably coming tomorrow. We'll wait till probably Saturday to respond to them, but.
Uh, you can put it this way.
Times people looking at that crazy. Um, I think probably, I don't know. They want my buyers, so I don't know if they're looking at either bed breakfast thing or by the lodge.
Are they contingent on ten business days to look at this, you know?
Oh, yeah, there's some new diligence for it, yeah.
Well, you said.
Yeah.
I haven't talked to the person about it yet, they didn't know about it.
Oh, did they, was it on the market? It had like three thousand views or something on Zillow. Well, I got it in as a residential, because I figured, well, it's kind of its own residential, so it's. Because technically, it's not commercial, but it could be. I was gonna put in his book, I haven't had a chance to.
Guess you don't know.
Yeah. It'd be interesting.
Yeah.
We got the roof patched up, a couple things, you know, so we just been time for the snow food, it's like a little bit.
It's over, there might, it might all be gone, but, oh, actually, I didn't even put them out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. There you go.
Alright, here, I know we're pretty much. Oh, Jim. Thank you.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Jim.
Well, I think it's four thirty, are we all up and, up and running?
Um, we have the meeting running, we have all the starts, binder running. As ready as we ever could.
And we have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
And Ryan, you online, have we got anybody else, any other commissioners?
Uh, Christine is online.
Ryan, are you out there?
I'm here.
Oh, yeah, I see, okay, alright, see, okay, good. Do we need to do a roll?
Did you guys hear that I'm here too?
Yep.
Yeah, Miss Christina.
You need to do another roll call, one more roll call.
Ryan, do you wanna call roll?
Yep. Commissioner Rock? Commissioner Nemec?
Here.
Commissioner Timsor?
Here.
Commissioner Tunnel?
Here.
Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Kevin Lyon?
Here.
And, uh, I thought I mentioned this, but I don't think I did, uh, Jo- Johanna Cron, uh, got a promotion at work, and can no longer make it to meetings, so she has resigned, um, so we are looking for an area of impact. Commissioner, anybody have?
Guys wonder about that when I saw it in the paper, so that's for her position?
Alright. What position did she take?
Impact, another impact zone. So, staff received all notices, and have all notices been posted and required documents as needed?
Yep.
Alright. Before we get started, just wanna let all commissioners know that during any of the applications, if you've had any ex parte communications, or if there's any third-party conversations regarding that application or conflicts, please let us know at the time of that application. And just a reminder of that. And take the first item, view and approval of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yep.
Any questions, changes, corrections?
So, just a question, I wasn't here, and I don't know who all was here last week, so.
Okay.
Tony wasn't, right?
Right.
No, Tony wasn't.
So.
I think we still have enough for a forum to be able to approve them, because we got Christine and Ryan online. Four of us, yeah, we still have enough for them, so you guys can just abstain from the vote. So, gonna have a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve the minutes.
I guess I can second?
I shouldn't have done that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright. Real quick, right before we get started, there is an item on new business, uh, number five, DR Design Review twenty-one eleven. We'd like to move in front of old business, just that one item for a timing for the applicant. So if I can have a motion to move DR Design Review twenty-one eleven in front of Design Review twenty-fourty-four, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll move that we move DR twenty-one eleven in front of Design Review twenty-fourty-four.
Second is?
Second.
Alright, the motion, second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So, if everybody, hopefully you can hear that out there, that for ten forty Chris Lane will move in front of the Stockton Drive one, just for timing for the applicant. Alright, so with that, we'll start with the preliminary development plan and review. We have three application for due to be determined Clements and Divid Lane and Woolley, and I believe Jim is here, Jim Frank? Present.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for letting me talk tonight. We have three applications for you, the first one is what we're calling the Clements right away.
Jim, could we have your name and address for record?
Sure. Jim Frank, one four zero two eight Orwood Road, call. So, to get you orientated on this, is if you know the intersection of what is Divid Lane and Woolley Avenue, which is to the east, to the right, the lower right is Woolley Avenue going into Spring Mountain Ranch subdivision, right off to the right. So, right after you get past Spring Mountain Ranch, heading west, you take a right, and you're on Divid Street. The subject property is one point seven eight acres in size, and if you zoom in a little bit to the area that where the units are. The, what you see here also next to Divid is Clements Road right away, it's vacant, has not been used. What currently is on that right away is a roughed-in trail that comes off of Divid and runs up within the right away, and goes over to what is the other side of the right away of Clements, and then eventually into Reedy. The, the master path plan shows a corridor there for paths in the future, coming from Reedy up over to, I think it's Spruce Street. Part of the conversation with staff was to consider continuing that pathway and some kind of improvement, be it gravel or something more than that, to calve the connectivity within the vacated right away. As you can see, on this project here, there is twelve units being proposed, and there are six two-story duplexes with parking below, and four duplex units with parking below, and then eleven, units eleven and twelve is the client's proposal as far as working with the, the city housing issue, and we will continue, can work with staff on that. This Divid Road or Lane is a private road, and so I will be tasked with working with that homeowners association to, to see if we can use a short stretch of the road, sharing the cost of maintenance and snow removal. And the, the reason for that is, is that it allows us to align up Divid Lane a little more geometrically correct at the intersection of Woolley. Also, I think the offsetting value of this is it allows us to keep the right away that's vacant.
Pick up the nail.
What'd he say?
Somebody else talking.
Oh, close now.
There guys, I muted everybody, and now I can't unmute you guys. Hey, Tony? Is there a button on this monitor here?
Eric, can you hear us now?
There we go.
Okay.
We're back.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Yeah, good job, Tony.
First meeting, what the hell?
The reason why they approached the homeowners association on Divid Lane is for the following reasons. One, we want to keep the Clements vacant right away as vacant, so we continue to have the natural buffer between that subdivision and this proposed project. In addition, be able to, you know, provide some connectivity to the other side of, which is a very hilly area. If you can see to the top right of this thing, we have some topography and some relief up there that makes it, I won't say challenging to build on, but it's, it's definitely a buffer that we think would be an advantage to everybody around, to screen, and to have some exclusivity for both areas. Uh, the positioning of these units here are several reasons. One, the adjacent apart, well, not apartments anymore, but the Ponderosa complex next door is similar in nature, and its compatibility is probably very close to similar. Also, you can see that the preliminary delineated wetlands on the south side of the entrance road, where I do a lot of wetland delineation work, that, this will become an isolated wetland, which will then not be jurisdictional with the Army Corps, meaning it will be accepted as a wetland, but because it's isolated, it doesn't have any connectivity from one to the another, it, it will probably fall out. But nonetheless, it is a, and you'll see this in my next two projects, this theme of what was happening with the glaciers back ten thousand years ago, it was a pretty violent place over there. I did Spring Mountain Ranch, and every rock in the world we hit, so. So we want to keep all of these, there's very large aspens, there's large trees that are on the hill, I mean historic large trees, and we want to keep these as much as possible intact. The isolated recessional area caused by the glacier is an excellent place to pre-treat before you go into it, and then use it as homeowners management, and protect the existing trees there. So that's in, in a capsule what this project is about, and I'm open to questions or some comments that be anxious to talk about, so we could make this better if possible, so.
Commissioners, do you have any questions, Jim on this one? Do you have a designated snow storage area?
Well, the snow storage is gonna be twofold. Um, there's a couple spots that we can push it off behind the buildings, but most importantly, it's gonna be areas where we're gonna come into the existing retreat area and have points of entries push the snow. It's not a very large site, so it's not gonna take a lot. Again, another place for best management practices for treating snow melt and storm water, so.
Would you be pushing it down to the wetland area, because it tends to go down there already?
Well, again, it's gonna fall out as a non-jurisdictional wetland, but yes, we'll be pushing into there. That road, entrance road is long enough that without causing a great deal of disturbance, you can have some twenty-foot, twenty-five-foot entrances to pull, push into that and store it, and not have to deal with, you know, going around and knocking down more vegetation, which we're trying very hard not to do.
What if, and the reason I ask this, because I know in the past I've actually been dealt with this property a bit, if the timber loss, I think it's timber loss six, homeowners association does not allow access on Divid?
Well, then we're gonna come up to Clements right away, and.
Okay, so you're already looking at doing that?
We, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
It's not a hard deal, we're just trying to be.
Well, yeah, this makes the most sense, I just.
And, you know, frankly, with this, with conversations preliminary with the city, they would prefer us to come up to it, because they don't want to have two roads there.
Yeah.
And have two lanes of asphalt and all the things that go with it. So I'm hoping to be able to have several conversations with them, and I think, hopefully they'll see the merit, because otherwise, you know, their screen's gonna go away to some effect, and, you know, then it pushes us to think, well, heck, why not we just go into the hillside then, right, which we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, no, I don't make sense, just be aware that in the past they said no.
Yeah.
I don't know how far people got.
We have alternative key.
Yeah, just, okay, so I just wanted to make sure you were considering that.
Yeah, I know, I was tasked with the order, dealing with that, so.
Alright, have fun.
Sure, it'll be a pleasure.
Yeah.
Does the wetlands ever overflow?
No.
It gets down there pretty good.
It's, it's associated with the groundwater in that area. Over time, I think that thing had, because you'll see it right down the road from the next project, where it may have had some connectivity, but with the old remnants of McCall and the way they got around, and some things got pushed around, it's, it's not there. And if you look on Woolley, Woolley Avenue to the south, right, they run that ditch that comes out of Spring Mountain Ranch subdivision, which is, right, I worked on that project back in nineties when I moved here, rightly named, because it is springs that come out of the hill up on the, up on the ridge up there, and it runs, you know, pretty much through the early part of summer, down that south ditch, and then eventually crosses over and goes into the next project I'm talking about. So that just bypassed that whole natural system, and.
And there's a pretty good, pretty good rise there to the properties in the south, because they come, it goes up pretty good.
Yeah.
It doesn't really have the topo on here, but it goes, those properties that they border Woolley, that go up to the, the south border of this, and it's pretty deep down in there, considering.
What you had back in the day was two glaciers mashing right together right in the spot. Um, so everything got moved around and stomped on and moved out.
So it dips down there pretty good. And so with the pathways, saying that, let's say, assume you can use Divid, are you looking to do a path from just across this property all the way down to Woolley?
You know, I'm gonna show you where I just pulled off of. Well, I don't have on that piece, but on the path plan, the city proposed path plan, it shows a proposed pathway coming from Reedy to where Dawson ends on the north side of this, and then it cuts over on the street there.
But are you looking to do the path along this property down to Woolley?
Yes.
You would, assuming you could use.
I would take it up to the end of the property to the north and stop there, which is already a path. People are using it to get to one side of the area to the other, so it's not like it's not there. It's an impromptu path that people just.
Yeah, yeah, but so you would continue south all the way to Woolley?
Yes.
As far as the plan is.
That's the plan.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions for Jim?
One question more, just from the commissioner on the city side, I've seen in the past that we have a requirement for, you know, extra-sized storage boats, RVs, that kind of stuff, will that apply to this? Is it something that we need to consider?
I don't believe so, Brian, I don't see that there'd be a requirement. I mean, this is just a preliminary's way of seeing the storage, if they have the regular garages, they're not, it's not really extra space.
Unless you want to knock some more trees down, there's no space for that.
I don't.
And these buildings are minimal, trying to be conscious of the side, so. And we did look at that, because it's a sales issue, right?
Don't have any more questions?
Any other questions? Alright, we'll move on to the pre-application for Dawson and Woolley, and Jim is here for that as well.
I also have Steve.
Oh, yeah.
On the line, on the blue line, so we're working this together, I'm gonna do some of the talking, and he's gonna make sure I don't screw it up. Yeah, this one has a little, few more issues to discuss, and. Just let me get my pile together here. And I see now that I plotted the same drawing twice, so I don't have all of my information, but you probably do. Okay, so, starting here, the project site is located along Woolley, and is bounded by one side of it, the whole block of Woolley Avenue to the south, Davis Avenue to the east, Spruce Street to the north, and then Dawson Lane to the west. And then if you can see, across Dawson, there's another little area there that is also bounded by Dawson, Woolley, and Luisa. And if you can blow up on the unit count, that would be helpful on that sheet, because that's the one I didn't plot.
There are another two, Brian, we got people in the back. Two more, two more pluses. Yeah.
Too much. Alright, there you go. So, in total, there's thirty total units. Twenty-four of these two-story duplex units, and you can see the square footage associated with that, with parking below. Um, in addition to those twenty-four, there's six two-story triplex units, nine sixty square feet, with parking below. So you can, Brian, zoom out of that. And then maybe more into the plan itself, there you go. So on this site, you can see, this is another one, if you, we'll look at the photograph next, that has not been developed over the years, I think it may have been logged back in the mill days before things have happened. And actually, Dave Pugh's here tonight, and he helped me with this land plan. I promised him I wouldn't let him talk, so won't let that happen. We took a lot of effort in trying to avoid the trees on these parcels, this overall parcel. And so how you see these buildings laying out are an attempt to reduce the footprints of these buildings. If you look along Woolley, you'll see a screened area that shows some wetlands. And if you blow that one up down below. I don't know if that shows that great. Maybe it's the other drawing that we can look at. There you go, that, blow that one up. So the screened areas there are a delineated wetlands, and so what's happening here, if you move down a little bit, and we can see the Spruce Street connectivity, there you go. Down, move it up a little bit. Okay, well, I meant the other way, sorry. There, there you go. So what happens is the previous description of how the water, the intermittent stream that comes out of Spring Mountain Ranch runs down Woolley, and then it crosses the intersection here at Woolley and Davis, and it goes along Davis for a little ways, and then to the very far north, where you see this long linear piece here, that's the continuance of that intermittent stream, which then goes across like this, and then it's open, and then it's put in a pipe, and then it goes down to Mill Street, which is put in another pipe, and then at that point, it goes in to a big sand and grease trap right before the lake, and then enters the lake. So because these continuity of this, because this flows backwards to that in the spring, that in technicality has to be approved by the Corps, will be probably fall into a waters of the United States core permitted process. So that, where you see buildings in the, on the lower right, they're there, and the limited numbers, one is because it's a unique setting with the trees, again, a lot of large aspens and big firs. Those are tucked in between there and avoid all the wetlands. There will be some minor impacts with these road crossings here, and then two driveways on the other side, which will permit for, and then have, you know, a permit to fill, which is very, this will be very small, under a tenth of an acre, not, not something that will require mitigation of that sort. So, if you go across the way, there's a corridor between Davis and all the way over to Luisa, and there's two easements that's, that are in the amended first edition plat. And one is a thirty-foot wide that comes from Davis over to Dawson, and it's meant for recreational and utilities. So there's, there's a sewer line in that particular spot, and there is a small unimproved trail that goes across that. And it's also all the way to Luisa, is shown on the master plan as a separated trail, bike trail on that. So that being said, it goes across into this area here, which is, I think it's sixty-foot right away, or easement width, sixty, sixty-five feet. Uh, again, the same use, water and sewer in this one, and of course, the, the intermittent stream is running right through here, and you can see it on the photograph. So our intent is to continue the pathway through there, and preserve that area. There's an existing storm retention pond that's in play there, and then if you see just to the south of that, there's these duplexes that are two-story with garages on below, and again, we're trying to position these in such a way that we're screening from the road and trying to protect as many of these large trees as possible. If you move over to the other side, Brian, and. If you move over to the other side, Brian, and up were the other lots that I haven't discussed, those are additionally placed just for the exact same reasons. All around the edges, we're trying to preserve the large trees and where you can, you can almost see the big canopy sitting in here. And that's why we're trying to, you know, not push the count any more than that, is to honor that site. It has relief to it, but it's, it's actually, it adds value to the site. So screening on the edges from the outside in, inside out. We understand that there's easements there. We understand that there is a recreational easement that goes across there, et cetera. Now I'm going to get into some details where I'm going to need some help. The master plan for this area calls for Davis to have, I think, Brian, help me out here, it's a bike and pedestrian path on down Davis.
Yes, it's a bike path.
Bike path. So if you can switch to the other drawing. I can tell you in 1990, we didn't have this. I didn't even imagine this. So one of the problems with Davis is it's only a 50-foot right away, and you're not going to change that because of how, it's what's already built there. It's, that's what's plotted. Dawson is an 80-foot right away. A Pier is an 80-foot right away. Luisa is an 80-foot right away. I don't know what they were thinking back at the turn of the 20th century, but I don't know if they're going to roll some artillery or cannons. I'm not sure what's going on, but that's what's there. So from a practical point of being in this area for the amount of time that I have, Dawson, I mean, Davis presents itself with a problem. It is tight. It's only a 50-foot right away, and there's just very little limited sides to the edge of road and then the ditches. The plan and the discussion that Brian and I had is, you know, that's, you know, developing a bike path on the west side, which would be over along this edge to Woolley. And the problem with that is if you look up here, that's all a hill. And if you drive by there, it's a cut bank. It's almost one-to-one or almost less than that. And on top of that, the right away is the top of those cut banks, and in it is high transmission power poles and I think some telemetry. So from a practicality, it doesn't work very well. And in my opinion, it is a, it's a dangerous mix, narrow. And the site distance, when I talk about site distance, is when you pull up to a stop sign and look in directions, you have some issues because you can't really see this way. And you can see this way a little bit, but you still have this yard here. So it's just a whole lot of things being packed in there. And I'll get to the next level, but on Dawson Street, we're proposing on this side with communication with Brian, in this 80-foot area, is to have curb gutter sidewalk, sidewalk, but the sidewalk is wider so we can accommodate pedestrian and bikes on that as our proposal for that. If you, and I'm not sure how to do this. If you zoom out, or if you have Google Earth or something, I don't know, or I can show you on a map that I brought with me. There is several corridors that are being identified by the master plan, bike and pedestrian master plan. And what happens with this is you have proposed in the future, curb and gutter on Hemlock. So there's a connection point. Oh, there you go. See, that took me a half hour to do that. Do you want to? Here's our site. There's Davis I just discussed. There's these easements that are coming across this property right here. That dash line means separated path access. And then if you scroll to the north. The city has an easement here and a pathway that's improved from Davis over to Dawson, right there. It's in existence. Also, if you scroll further to the north and go to Roosevelt, which is the next one I'm talking about, off of Davis, we have the old spur for the lumber mill. So the train come up, turn back up, offload stuff, and we want to preserve that. But anyway, that's part of the plan, is to connect from here over to here to McCall Avenue, which is another pathway. So now scroll to the south, please. So here's McCall Avenue. There's this, and there's the existing Woolley separated path. So our, our question is, our proposal is, should we try as a, as a city and entity, try not to encourage bike path and pedestrian access from a certain point down Davis and then encourage them to move over a street either being Dawson or Luisa or Roosevelt so that we don't have that congestion and route it as such? Now, as far as our project's concerned, there's an 80-foot right away there. We're proposing for a sidewalk and curb and gutter and a widen-up thing for pedestrians and bikes. So it may be something we want to consider and work with staff on and you, is maybe we should consider taking the access from the existing trail that comes off of Davis to the top part of Dawson and down and try maybe not to encourage people to go down that narrow right away. And so this is something to consider. So that's why we have that, this discussion on this project. We plan to participate in the the city housing issue in some form and fashion, working with staff. And we haven't selected the areas yet, but we're doing an evaluation of the buildings. So that's, in general, that's where we're at with that. Well, one last thing. I know that talking with staff, standing out in this intersection, I know this is concern for public works right here because right now I think they pushed the snow on the property, maybe, I can't say. But this intersection for clearing it, for snow removal. And so we're proposing in in a helpful way is to maybe give an easement across here. See this line right here where the trees are changed from what are deciduous in the white and then more conifers in the green? Is that area is starting to be a little area, it's not totally, you might want to switch back to the other drawing.
Game boy.
Reminds me of my kids. See how this wetland configuration preliminary goes? We're suggesting that this area where it's upland, but the tree has changed, is to provide an easement so that you can clear that area out for site distance and snow storage. Another reason why that path doesn't work too well, because we have snow a lot of time, because where they pile it. So as something to kind of offset some of these concerns about snow storage for the city and their rightways.
Are all these easements city-related or?
Which easements? These?
Yes.
Yes.
So.
Well, it's a sewer district in the city.
It could be electrical, could be telephone, could be anything like that, right?
Yes, right now there isn't any of that in there, just water and sewer.
Okay.
If you go to the photo.
Platted road right away.
If you go to the photo, Brian, you can see, see that little trail? The same thing runs this way. Now, this is a discussion with staff is although we have our driveway here and it's only 30 feet, we could have the separated path on the south and dedicate that into it for the path, right? There's a question if in fact the philosophy is to maybe discourage access from this direction. What do you want to do about that? So that's, I don't know how we can answer that. I don't, it's not my thing I can answer today. I'm looking forward to working with staff on that issue. So that's generally the plan, and I'm open to questions. And Steve, did I miss anything?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Jim on this one? When I see on the application, or at least the agenda I had here, he says application for rezone. They're zoned eight per acre, correct?
Already.
Well, we're one over.
You're one over?
If this plan. We're 0.75 over, something like that.
Okay. I was going to say, I thought you had just enough, but you're just like one over.
Well, we're just this much, so.
Does that include, is that with the use of the city's housing policy or without the one over?
That contemplates using the city policy.
Well, this is Steve. With the density bonus, Jim?
With, yeah, I'll let you answer that, Steve.
I mean, I thought actually we were within the existing zoning, so I'm learning something tonight as well. The owners do plan to work with the city on some local housing units. So I think with the associated benefits of that, it may not require a rezone, but we'll take a more careful look at it.
Yeah, it looks like you're maybe 28 units, so you would need a minimum of two to get to your 30, to get the density bonus for two more.
Right, I think the current thinking of the owners would be to work with the city on 10% of the units being local housing units.
Go three.
Three, sorry, three.
Yeah, so three, so, and that would put you underneath and wouldn't need to do a rezone.
Right, that was my read on it as well.
Which would probably be better with everything going on with the sewer district, I'm guessing?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that'd be easier for you because, you know, with everything they have going on, you'd have a better chance of that. And you've probably already talked with them, but.
Um, I have. Yeah, so this being a preliminary plan, there's things to be sorted out, but in general, that's the scope and breadth of what we're talking about in this particular parcel.
With the pathway on Davis, are you thinking about going all the way up to Hemlock? And trying to have a jog off of Davis, off of Dawson? So if you're doing the pathway off of Dawson.
I'm suggesting that we will do it all along Dawson to Spruce Street.
To Spruce, but with the assumption to continue that up to Hemlock and have it come off of Davis? Is that's kind of your thought?
Coming off of Davis behind those units, behind, on the end of Dawson, right? Where it crosses over.
You moved it up to the north farther, like it's coming off of Hemlock, off of Davis, would turn off Hemlock and then create the pathway, basically move and come, continue down Dawson until it's out to your project. That's what you're thinking.
And then because it's sitting on the east side, it presents itself for a better site distance looking up the hill and looking the other direction.
Reason I was asking, so you're not looking to do a pathway from Davis to Dawson?
We're proposing that.
Just along Dawson?
Correct.
So not, not on the north, not crossing the north of Robinson?
We're not talking about doing one along Davis.
No, I mean, along Spruce.
On Spruce, yeah. Commissioner Lyons, that's a topic that is on our agenda. We have a full staff review next week, and that's a possibility, is to bring a pathway over from Davis on the property along Spruce to connect to that Dawson pathway. And then the other option that exists is to do a more improved version of the pedestrian trail in that easement between Dawson and Luisa to take it west. The advantage there being that then lines up with First Street and takes it all the way down to Roosevelt, which is, which I know Brian has indicated is a more desirable location to bring bikes onto Woolley. So we've got a number of options there to explore with staff that would, that we think would be safe for the user, safer for the user than Davis and actually more advantageous in terms of the desired endpoint.
Okay, yeah, I think so too. I think that intersection could be a little tricky with with increased traffic and everything else. There's some people blow through those signs.
Yeah. So that, that existing easement and pathway gives us an opportunity there between Dawson and Luisa to bring a more formalized pathway over to Luisa. And as I say, that lines up with fur and drops you right down to Roosevelt.
Brian, when we, I know that road had been plotted, it was one of our meetings a while back because original developers supposed to do stuff and didn't do stuff. I'm pretty sure we voted everything through with that. Does that have any effect with this at all?
Yeah, that was a record survey vacation a while back that, like you said, they gate the roadway and all that, and that really just sets up the base ground, the parcels here for this development. And I think what they're proposing is utilizing those parcels.
Okay, I didn't think it'd have any effect, but just want to make sure it didn't change anything. I didn't think it would. That's all I have. Commissioners, have any other questions for Jim on this one before we go to his third one?
Nope.
All right, we'll move to the third one that Jim has for To Be Determined Roosevelt Avenue.
Okay. In this one, I have two, concept one and concept two. And ultimately, I'd like to get into a discussion about the road limits. But concept one is primarily seven single-family units and six multifamily townhomes, probably similar to the past, drive-in garages and things like that, two-story. As you can see on this plan, you can see the dash lines as the pathway that's being proposed from Davis. So we're taking the existing railroad grade, still see it in play, it's used. And right now, this, from this point here, the gray stone two and two and three, I think, that goes over to McCall Avenue, which is platted. It ties in, and then the proposal is that along, on the sidewalk or adjacent to sidewalk is the bike and pedestrian pathway. And it ties you back into McCall Avenue. What, there's some limitations on this. This is a whole lot right here, and it goes from this point over to 80, 79, 79-point something feet, 80 feet. And so, you know, the right away is 60, and so by the time you do the curves and try to get in there, it's tight, and you end up taking out a lot of materials and trees. What the existing conditions are, and it's funny to look at the site over here, historical photos, but what happened was is this spur went over here and through AmeriGas, kind of like onto the side of it. And then it went this way and stopped somewhere in this direction, and then they would back up and come this way, with this being for storage, offload and such along this point right here. Yeah, what's happened over time because of these triangle area and who knows how many times it was altered. The drainage, the historical drainage, it comes from off the baseball dime. Uh, the drainage, the historical drainage, it comes from off the, the baseball diamonds and a little bit of Aspen Village, comes through this area and it creates these low spots that are in the middle that, um, you can see outlines of what are the preliminary delineated wetlands. They do have connectivity, they will have, uh, water to the United States jurisdiction, which will mean either we, uh, if we impact, we will have to go through a, through a permitting process. Uh, this plan contemplates on very limited amount of both plans of impacts to the wetlands. It also tries to preserve what I think is unique, uh, in the center here, because over time we have cottonwoods and, you know, large, semi-large trees in the middle and a nice little ecosystem that's been developed over time because that's where the water goes and it's where it's held. And, and it actually has a nice little, for the region, stormwater facility. Currently, this, these two phases have a temporary pond right here that never really got finished as their stormwater. So again, using those areas to protect the existing material, vegetation and water course. We've chose to try to show preliminarily how we can avoid as much as we can. Now, this, this plan shows because of the way we have to align to get the curves that are required and try to pull around and pull into this very narrow area with the, um, horizontal curves that are required, it takes out a lot of material in here. So, this is, as far as the city, McCall Public Works, their, um, their overall preference is not to have cul-de-sacs and to push on through and alleviate some of their snow issues. Both these plans allow, because you can see right in here, we can also provide areas to open up that are not in the wetlands and provide snow storage for that, help them out. So let's go to concept two. Concept two is another approach this. And it's eleven, eleven single-family units, but it can be, it can, just to show another way of how to develop this, it could be very similar to the one I just showed you. So what this one contemplates is coming off of Roosevelt, tying into the old streets, which is kind of funky. It's got these sidewalks and these deep ditch, ditches in there, which is awkward for the city because they could fall into them, they're deep. Um, and I've been, in preliminary discussions indicated, don't do that, so I won't. Again, continuity on the old trail and along the road, which is curb and gutter sidewalk. The difference is, is the cul-de-sac and along this edge here provide for, uh, the required easement width and emergency access width is to have continuity between here and there with a pathway and emergency access where this would be barricaded off with cut chain or some kind of lockbox sort of thing, which is typically used all around the city. What this does is, because of these lots, and on both in cases, is that we can come in and now we've moved the road over and you can see we're not in the heart of all these cottonwoods and other trees. We've moved it out into the open. And so it, it takes less area. Well, this allows these individual lots to have enough room that you can still preserve, stay out of the wetlands, but still preserve envelopes. So that you have some of those trees that stay and incorporated with the, with the residential dwelling. Uh, the other concept, uh, just because of the width and length of it, it takes up and ha- it has to move that way in order to meet the, the geometry of it. Uh, to compensate for the city, for this, this area here where they have to circle and move snow and where they pu- put it is, again, we can open up areas, um, to store snow for them to make their snow removal task less cumbersome. I personally think from a land planning standpoint and le- lesser impact, I prefer this way. But this is a discussion I was gonna have with you guys to get some input, see what you have any questions on.
So you say you're, you could open up areas for more snow, but each of these are the individual lots, correct?
Well, let me, I'll go on the big picture so everybody can see. Either case, I'm saying that in these areas that's not in the green, we can open that up and have snow storage that's dedicated. See, so it's off the road, you can take out these vegetation, we're not into the wetlands, impacts are minimal, and open up spots where they can turn, push, turn and push. Because if they have a long way, all the way over to here, they're on McCall Avenue, and I don't know if you're familiar with that, but that's a, you know, old time, this is an improved road that did back in the nineties, but it stops right there and you're all in that old subdivision of McCall, you know, Diamond, Ruby, very narrow existing homes. So they're gonna have the same problem anyway. So, this is a different way to look at it.
Are the lots smaller because of this, this scenario right here than they?
The other lots are smaller because it took up more space.
Yeah.
These lots are bigger.
Okay.
Which, in this, this plan, account's not exact, but it's, you know, we're, we're working towards it. But the point of this plan is to show we can have bigger lots, bigger envelopes, or less smaller envelopes, and protect these areas with screenings so that we're, you know, we either knock it all down or we don't. So, we could position the envelopes in such a way that we're preserving as much of the vegetation as we can. Whereas the other way, it pushes us, because we eat up more ground, pushes us to not honor that, those vegetation over there and smaller lots, which you're gonna go, you know, setback to setback, so. I mean, this, this concept could do the same thing over in here, just as the other one did with, uh, townhomes and such out here in the open and be similar to what's right next to that. If you have not walked this area in a while, this is very lovely. You've got this little wetland in here, you're in the trees. It's a, it's a nice transition zone. And again, if you look at the other two concepts I showed you, this is another way to get people off Davis and push them over other ways that are less, um, in impactful as far as running into some conflicts.
Have you had any discussion with Public Works and their thought of the cul-de-sac?
You know, I, yes, I have, and they see my point, and, um, you know, I have had both planning and Public Works out there, I think they realize that, you know, that probably the cul-de-sac's the better way to go, but they're, you know, this, their overall, um, system is not, not to have cul-de-sacs. So, I, I'd have to let staff chime into that, but I, we plan on working with staff closely to see if this is something they'll consider with the other mitigating things that I have proposed, like places to put their snow. Kind of like what I did on concept two, you know, looking at their needs and trying to help out versus just saying, okay, well, we can't work on it, then unfortunately, we're gonna have to do something different, so. Brian, do you have any issues, any conversation about this?
Yeah, so like Jim said, we've had a lot of conversations on this already, and you know, the city's perspective of the cul-de-sacs, uh, that don't provide connectivity to somewhere or not generally beneficial to the city as a whole, and, uh, therefore, if they exist, they should be private streets. Um, so in order for this cul-de-sac to be done, it would need to be replatted all the way down to Hemlock as a private street, um, which is a pretty significant push.
Ain't gonna happen.
All the homeowners.
Yeah, I would say the challenge of that being successful is zero.
Yeah, ain't gonna happen.
And so what you're saying is that's it, do it this way or that's it, so, um. So, I, I, I think that they recognize that there's, there's some possibilities with this. I would hope to think that the continuity is right here, right? Because they cannot, we can keep that screen, we have the emergency access, we still have the connectivity for the pathway for the bike and pedestrians, and unfortunately, you know, maybe this case, there's a consideration on the overall, uh, land taken into view and overall concepts of pathways and their connectivity. Um, preservation of, of what I think is an important area as far as its history with the, with the rail, the connecting yards and all that stuff. I know that as long as I've been here, and uh, when I first showed up, there was nothing over there, and it was just still remnants of, well, it wasn't remnants, it was, so. And I think in mitigating things is, you know, we could go into wetlands and we could impact them and we can do other things. We could go in here and we could, uh, um, you know, honor this, this connectivity, but you know, it won't be as attractive as it is now because we can't make it work, you know, and then we're being pushed in a direction that is not helpful. So.
And I have a, a question, um, on the, the concept that shows the, the road going all the way through.
Yeah.
Where it ties into the other existing road to the north there, is that the only location along there that your property boundary abuts the right-of-way? Is this, this is like a private parcel?
Christina, can you see my picture, my finger up here?
No, I can't, unfortunately.
It's at the tip of the road where it's abutting that right-of-way. You're talking about Christina, so like the top, right?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is that the only?
That's the only spot. This lot, and if you wanted to point at that, next to it, to the left and west of the red line, that's there right in here.
Yeah, kind of where the cul-de-sac ends, I guess.
And it's kind of a long teardrop to a very skinny point, that's a lot. And there's only eighty feet there, so that's the only place to get through.
Gotcha. And in both of these concepts, this area coming from the south is like a common lot, it looks like. A wetland storage, stormwater common lot, neither of those.
Yeah, both of them are trying to, to, to honor the, the existing features in there. And again, this is a proposal.
Sure.
But that, that is my attempt at trying to do the right thing. And the client do the right thing.
And what, what's to the, can you just, I can look this up, but what's to the south? Just out of curiosity.
South Roosevelt continues.
Oh, I see it here on the southern map, okay.
Yeah, it goes through an existing townhouse. Community, um, and that's the one where if you've walked, been down that road, you, they got sidewalks and then, uh, deep ditches as their section for their stormwater, and then the road.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and we're, on our proposal, however it works, we're gonna not do it that way. It, it just doesn't make sense that way. It's too much of, too many holes in the ground to run into or drive off into or have to deal with snow and stuff like that. And that was a request from the city, so we're gonna try to work that out.
Was there ever anything laid out for this one as a continuation of the Hearthstone?
There was a.
Or not Hearthstone, but Graystone?
There was a preliminary plot that showed this area that had basically, uh, these types of units, and it clear-cut the whole thing and took out.
All units.
Eighty percent of the wetlands. So it was all units, all piled in there, and that was their third phase.
Okay.
Yeah, um, my clients are, are, uh, very conscious about doing the right thing in McCall, and they wanna, you know, they know that this is a unique piece and it's, you know, it's right downtown, it's in the lake, people are gonna walk through it, they're, you know, they understand it. Um, so, that's, you know, for land use possibility, I mean, this makes a lot of sense because they're right next to it, right? And then over here for lots or lots here, or units, but lots here is married up to the, kind of an estate lot side over here. Over here lends itself to both product, lots or, or townhouses, one. Less impacted than the other. Again, economics push things around a little bit, so. So what I was hoping between these two concepts was to get some feedback from you guys, uh, be it work with staff or, you know, I kind of, I, I feel like this is a better option or we just don't know.
And it's just tricky with Public Works not really wanting the cul-de-sac. Uh, section at the end of the cul-de-sac, so it may have hit, was something like that, that would have to be plowed and maintained year-round as well.
What's that?
For the emergency access?
Yes, that would be.
Have to be privately plowed and maintained?
It would be privately plowed and maintained, because it's also acting as a, a flag driveway.
Going back to that far, so that far lot doesn't have access onto McCall Avenue?
It has, it has access off a flag, so what you'd have is a twenty-foot driveway separated by, either be it landscaping or something else. So driveway, and then this would be separated with landscaping and then the twenty-foot driveway.
Last lot wouldn't go up to McCall Avenue, the very.
This one would go up to here and you could see how.
You see that, my show's like.
See how this, here that, that's eighty feet, right?
Yeah, so that lot wouldn't use that as their driveway out to the road?
I, I misspoke. That's not eighty feet, that is the width you need in order to get an emergency vehicle in there and still honor this lot to the south in the Mc- McCall side of it, McCall Avenue side.
But would that lot go out to McCall?
Well, you would see this right here, see this corner? That would, this would be encumbered from here all the way in with an easement, but the ownership would be, um, to here, be like that.
Okay, so that lot would use the.
It wouldn't come, it would come in off of this direction.
Right.
And it's the only flag. See, I have legal access here off the cul-de-sac. And this one, in order to allow for the cul-de-sac, I can use it, this as a flag to get back in here with a positioned residence. Again, trying to protect the trees. And then to the east of that, I have the dedicated pathway and emergency access. That's what fits into here, and that's the width that's required for that easement. In combination, that easement goes like that.
Now, I think it warrants definite more discussion with the Public Works and kind of get a feel of with their roads. I don't know how much we would push if they absolutely didn't want that, where we would go with that. So it'll probably be good with more discussion with staff and Public Works on.
Yeah, I guess my position would be it would be worthy of more discussion. You know, I wouldn't want the wishes of Public Works to stop from thinking outside the box. You know, I like the connectivity part, um, and saving more trees. And so, yeah, I encourage you to, you know, talk with them more and don't give up.
Okay, well, I think, Brian, is it fair to say that, uh, that we can talk about this some more and, and and see if there's some room to move, or is this, uh, in your opinion, this is it?
The, the pre-application for a reason, it's a high-level, rough concept, and we'll keep working things out till we get an application ready.
Well, I answered that.
Beat him.
Hey, I'm sorry about that. I had to. Okay, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim.
Thanks.
Wow, wait, you don't have the next one?
No.
You're on a roll. Okay. We'll move on to the pre-application, um, for his BUD, BUP, and CSUP for four-ten South Third Street. Is David Hatch or, or excuse me, Jeff Hatch or David Ferret? Present? Or online?
Yep. We're both on.
All right, well, feel free to tell us what you have in mind.
Okay, um, I do have a, a presentation. I don't know if I can share that, Brian?
Yeah, you should be able to click the share screen up button up to the upper right and open that.
Good evening, commissioners. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is 200 West 36th Street, Jersey, Idaho, 83714. And this evening, we'd like to just discuss a pre-application meeting for land unit development with conditional use and subdivision for luxury self-storage adjacent to the airport. So the proposed location is on the northwest corner of the highway and Kron directly adjacent to McCall Airport. Here can emerge aerial map of the location of the site. Actually, two parcels, one with the residence and one that's just bare land currently. Conceptual layout has stored structures along the perimeter, along frontage. And we have opportunity for making a landscape berm as part of that beautification of the highway corridor system. Our primary access would be off of the access adjacent perpendicular to Kron. And then secondary access primarily for fire engines off of the highway. Circulation right now, these are fairly large drivelines. It's about 50, 60 feet wide for trailer movement. And all of these would be interior enclosed structures. So no, no proposed canopies at this time. Did just kind of a quick preliminary sketch as far as snow storage. Right now, in most of the kind of higher climate regions with large quantities of snow, we actually lower the slope on the roofs, put in cleats and store majority of the snow on the structures themselves are engineered, over-engineered to be able to maintain that. In addition, currently onsite, we're showing about 20% snow containment. And we can improve that as needed as our civil continues on. As far as concept hallway, we wanted to maintain landscaping berm with vegetation to, again, kind of celebrate the natural vegetation up here in McCall. And then with that, I will scan for any questions.
Real quick, and I had previous conversation with Brian a little bit. I don't, Brian, if you want to go into detail of what, with discussion with the master plan and that entrance off of across from Kron with IDT and the master plan for the airport, and how would it affect this project? Because that's going to be the first thing that there's going to be some changes or problems.
Yeah, so, yeah, I had a meeting this afternoon, part of the airport master planning process. They are planning on expanding in the future and having a small terminal near here and extending Kron Lane in toward the airport site. So some site planning modifications and dedication right of way may be required from that.
Oh, and with that, I don't think they would allow a driveway being that close to the intersection.
Yep.
So, yeah, I could see that as being one big factor, which would change, I think, a fair amount of what you'd want to do.
So we may want to create a primary entrance up here versus along that road or maybe an access off of that future Kron lane to the site?
Yeah, I think, yeah, as long as you're not taking access off the highway at the seller's property boundary, you should be fine.
What's the difference between these, these storage units and other storage units in town? Are they bigger or are they more developed or?
Well, they're about the same.
So these units, Lux Locker units, are a larger format. And David, I don't know if you want to elaborate a little bit more about Lux Locker. David's with the ownership team. Yeah, no problem here. My name's David Ferretti. I'm with the Lux Locker team here. And we've done several of these projects. First one in this area, of course. And it makes a huge difference is the, they're all larger. It's fully enclosed sectional doors. A portion of these tend to get, since we we condo them out, some will be rented out, some will be sold as well, too. They kind of goes by each site as we determine how much are going to be rented and sold. And some will also get plumbing and sewer connections as well, too. So they can install a bathroom later on. And that would be under a separate tenant improvement permit if that was allowed. It's all, it's going to be unmanned. It's all under security. It's fully gated with access. Security, people come in and out. Workers do whenever they lease it based on their card access and remotes. And it's overseen by the C O eight, which is a block that they would see, all of them. They pay their, you know, the, there's a snow control at landscaping. There's two restrooms in there as well, two showers, RV wash, RV dump as well, too. Those are very typical for all our projects. And we maintain them, make sure they're looking nice and running properly. So I guess that's basically our model in a nutshell.
Well, one thing, the wall across the front, I don't know, it runs into probably a couple of different things with the blank wall. I don't know how it affects the potential scenic route. But I think that could be an issue. And I can't quite tell on the setbacks, but might be within the setbacks, but I know that blank wall is going to have quite a few issues.
Which, which blank wall are you referring?
Well, we got a wall going all along the highway, correct?
Oh, we would have a berm along the highway.
With the wall behind it?
Yeah, correct. The wall, it's stacked walls behind it.
Ryan, how does that work within the code? And I, I mean, it's got blank walls. I know we don't have, I mean, how is it with retain or those type of walls?
Yeah, so our code does have a prohibition against blank walls abutting public roadways and scenic routes specifically, especially. So, you know, storage units are storage units. They're kind of hard to avoid blank walls on. So, you know, we want berming, landscaping, you know, whatever we can to reduce and eliminate it as much as possible.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, from my perspective, that would be my biggest concern is how much blank wall you actually got to see. If you're going to put a berm up and put trees on it, I'd rather see trees all the way along there than I'd see pieces of building. Just as my opinion. You're looking for what might bother this Commissioner.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's an issue to consider. Looking at some of the scenic route requirements. I mean, that coming in, you don't really want to see the blank wall.
So if you can screen the wall with landscaping, that, you're seeing that as a pro? What you're looking for?
To look in it closer, yeah. Look at the, both the scenic route guidelines as well as just the blank wall restrictions. I think what else I had on this one?
And I think that what we would be talking about preferring to see is a specific landscaping plan and calling out the species. And, you know, having someone design so that there's a mix and match of colors. And and I guess not too many deciduous trees because half the year you see right through and you'll be able to see those blank walls. And I don't know how high you're proposing the berm to be. But the berm would help screen some as long as you had enough adequate vegetation trees on the berm.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments for the applicant?
Yeah, it just, just a question on that. I guess the L part of that building is to the, to the north of the property, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So it would seem to me if that was your primary in and out entrance, now that Kron maybe is in question, that you want to have a good line of sight if you're pulling a big motorhome or into or out of that location. Get a turn lane there?
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, they have to have IDT on the turn lane. But what brings another question. Because it's so close to the road and you're going to have a gate there, the distance if somebody's bringing in a trailer, how, I mean, you can't tell the distance of this, but how much distance do you have there for anybody to pull in and out or to pull in, I should say? So something to consider.
Particularly for a primary entrance, we pull that back off of the roadway for that reason. So if this is going to become the primary, then we definitely want to accommodate that. Those are great comments.
Okay.
And then I guess as long as we're talking about that L shape, you're coming from, from McCall going south, you're going to see a fence in the building. So we're talking about blank walls there as well. So we'd want that to be part of the landscape plan to reduce the the amount of wall that we're seeing. And just one more comment. When, when we're looking at these, these design kinds of things or shoreline or, or scenic byway issues, a landscaping plan, you know, is a must. But ideally, if you can Photoshop buildings into the site or onto the site and, and include the landscaping with it, you know, picture's worth a thousand words, especially in this kind of a deal. Because it's, it's becoming more and more, you know, top of mind for people to not want to see big square buildings driving into town.
Yeah. All right, any other questions, comments? Anything from the applicant? Go ahead.
I've got a question regarding buildings D and E that are, it looks like the fencing, it almost looks like they're outside of the fencing. Are they? Is this the back of the building? Is the back of these buildings facing the highway? Or is that? Will those be like highway-facing buildings?
Well, access to buildings E and D would be internal to the site, which that allows us to stagger and, and make more variations with the thoughts of those buildings for the street frontage. So versus being solely blank-walled buildings, typically Lux Locker brand will do a range of different architectural metal panel features, some that are more of kind of like stucco finish, some are more of a traditional standing scene. And then with the jogs and variations, they try to break that up so that you don't have that monotony on the, on the street frontage that you guys have expressed concern about.
Okay.
Is the gap in the, in the, for the second line of buildings to come in right there, that could just go down a little bit right next to the highway, is that an entrance point, too?
Entrance points. And then this would be a security screened fence.
Okay.
Which typically they propose a split face, single score CMU block wall with wrought iron above. So it has, you know, a nicer character than your more traditional storage style fencing.
Speaking with Morgan in a chat, there sounded like there may be some drainage comments from engineering. Would like to speak.
Okay.
Is anybody allowed to answer a question?
No, our staff engineer is answering it.
I'm sorry.
Our staff engineer is answering.
Oh, okay. I was just going to ask if I could answer a question.
Go ahead, Morgan.
Oh, okay. So this is Morgan Stroud, staff engineer for the city. So there is a drainage ditch that runs through the middle of the property and it caught, it's not improved very well right now. It doesn't flow very well and causes a lot of flooding in the springtime with the runoff for the airport. So just keeping that in mind, that improvements to that will need to be made so that upstream and downstream property owners aren't affected. And it, there's a possibility of rerouting it. It's just very, it's very flat in this area. So getting the fall to get it to flow might be difficult. So that's just something we'll have to work in the design of the project.
Okay. We did, within the last month, request. And I know they've been out to do fieldwork, but I don't think we've actually formally received the, the survey that indicates that information. And so we'll be coordinating a top graphical survey with our civil engineer to ensure that we get a good handle on that for our formal application and presentation to the commission so that we very thoroughly address that concern.
All right. Sir, were you part of the applicant or?
No, I just wanted, I'm a public. Can't ask a question.
Uh, not at this stage, no, it's not a public. Open at that, thanks. All right, anything else? All right, well, thank you very much and we'll, Ross, and we'll move on.
Thank you very much for your time, Commissioners. Have you one, please?
Doesn't look like we have anything on the consent agenda. So with this, we're going to, as we, was approved earlier in the meeting, we're going to move up one item of new business.
Oh. There was one, one more pre-app.
One more. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the one more pre-app. Wrong one.
Elo Road.
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay. Elo Road, I'm sorry, Ross. Where is Toys Live?
Uh, thank you, Commissioners. It's Amy Holm. I didn't mean to interrupt there. I just wanted to make sure I was able to speak. Amy Holm, 706 North First Street. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Right. I'm representing where Toys Live. Ross, the applicant should also be on the call today. We're preparing to file a new land use application for storage condos. The gentleman who just went in front of us probably paved the way for some discussion and some things that are also on our mind. This proposal from where Toys Live is near the corner of Sampson Trail and Elo Road. If Brian don't mind putting up our depiction, it is east of Sampson Trail and south of Elo. Thank you, Brian. In the bottom left corner there, you can see a small depiction. So the access here would be off of Elo Road. Oh, thank you. There, it's great. So there are a couple of parcels that do, are right on that corner. This parcel is not exactly on the corner, but just a little further east on Elo. The idea between these condominiums is that they be intended for individual sale and wholly privately owned.
Very good. I appreciate it, but.
Can we mute that, Brian? Okay, Amy.
Okay, thank you. The, the idea between. The idea behind the project would be that the condominiums would be intended for individual sale and wholly privately owned. There is this growing need in our community for this type of storage units for toys, boats, recreational vehicles, campers, also just hobbyists. So I think we've all seen a growing need where city residents are asking for larger-type garages, which just don't comply. So this need is there. The units would not be used for commercial purposes, and they would benefit subdivisions and, like I said, hobby enthusiasts. Ross and Larry, who I said are both on this call, they are both really experienced. Larry is a, has a long history in construction management, and especially in heavy civil construction, a unique sort of subspecialty in soil freezing. He and his fiance are new to our community and have recently purchased a home in a nearby subdivision. And then Ross adds a different specialty to our team and his background in commercial real estate and development. Both of them, you know, I think are going to be great to work with. I've been retained to help with the entitlement process. We have a contractor engaged, a local surveyor, who's currently doing survey work. We should have a topographic map anytime now. Local engineers, a geotechnical subcontractor, and we're getting that architect engaged as well. This property here, this parcel is 5.4 acres. And as I said, it's depicted on the proposed site plan. The current, so the zoning is RE, rural residential estates. This use as storage is conditionally allowed in this zone, and we are confident that the project will meet the requirements of a CUP. The application will be a planned unit development subdivision with a CUP as part of that planned unit development design review. We are not, I don't, I'm pretty confident about this, on the scenic route. The property is located outside city limits, but within the impact area. This area is kind of unique on this Elo Sampson Trail, it's at the edge of the impact area. The comprehensive plan shows this parcel as being large residential. The use really kind of, the zoning changes there, if you look at the comprehensive plan, and this use is compatible and makes sense here. There is a bike path master plan on Elo Road, of which my clients are proposing a, it's depicted right now as a future nature trail, but some kind of a pathways there. There's existing trees on this property, if you know it, which provide a, create a nice natural barrier to adjoining properties. The goal would be to keep as many existing trees as possible. If you know Elo Road at this area, we all know that there's this increase in elevation that occurs. This, the goal of the potential access would be that it is where it is flat, it provides a safe access. If you look at the feet, though, from South Sampson Trail to potential access, the property on the corner of South Sampson Trail is 175 feet deep, and then the proposal would be about 60 to 70 feet to the edge of the access, 30-foot-wide access. So it's before the hill starts to get steeper. The, you know, this is preliminary plan, but the units as depicted here are 63. That number may change some. The property may be platted in two phases, or it may be platted in one, we're still sorting through that. Snow storage and stormwater drainage, they are depicted here, and we're in the process of figuring out, you know, where that makes sense. Setbacks are being addressed in our design. This does require the PUD, that, you know, setbacks for individual units, obviously, they don't have, meet the setback requirement, so we'll work through that. Additionally, lighting, perimeter fencing, and gates are being, you know, addressed by my clients with their experts on what makes sense and what this is going to look like. I'm real cognizant of the idea that people driving by or adjoining neighbors want to have that buffer or barrier from this type of condo storage project, and we're working, you know, with that landscaping plan. And like I said, the existing trees on the property are really impressive and provide a nice natural barrier, and the idea would be we'd keep as many of those as we can. The traffic, this type of development provides, you know, minimal traffic. These are privately-owned storage condos. So the user, you know, may, you know, access their condo really not that often to just grab a toy and not come back for several months. So the minimal traffic, I think, is important, and the entry is off of Elo Road. The actual condos proposed, you know, like I said, there are 63 units that may adjust slightly. The idea is they're metal buildings with stone face, use of natural colors. The plan would be one office with a bathroom the same size as units, but that there would not be sewer to the other, you know, individual units, recognizing the limitation between the sewer district on that. Parking inside and adjacent to units. As I said, I think, you know, looking through the CUP standards and the 12 requirements, that we're working through those and really aware of what they are, and that we think this would be harmonious with the existing neighborhood. And the goal as far as, you know, timeline is we are prepared to kind of move ahead, meet with adjoining property owners soon, and a neighborhood meeting, and, you know, be ready to prepare and file our application early 2022. I'm happy to answer specific questions. One thing I just wanted to clarify on the pre-application meeting form, my clients had used auxiliary dwelling units, and that phrase really should have been, you know, storage, garage, condominiums. The city code does define auxiliary dwelling units, and this really isn't that. So that was just a misuse of those terms, the project is storage condos. Any questions or comments, or I'd love to hear from you.
When you say storage condos, that means to me that it's going to have electricity and it's going to have water plum to a lot of the parts of this project, or not?
Great question. Electricity, yes, but water sewer, no, not to each individual unit. I don't think we're exactly sure how that's going to look right now, and a utility plan would be forthcoming, but recognizing the limitations from the Lake Recreational Water and Sewer District, the idea being it would be really limited and not to each unit, no.
It's a way they can plaid it and be able to sell individual units.
What's the chances of somebody actually wanting to live in one of these condo storage units?
Tony, it's designed as a.
That's what I'm getting at.
But they're plating it as a condo so they can sell them individually. Just the term condo doesn't mean living space, it's just the way it's platted. So it has a separate legal description, so it's not one common lot.
Okay, I see.
It's like the ones they did over off.
I'm new, and I don't know what I'm talking about, a lot of situations, but when you say a condominium might take a place to live, and it's going to have water, electricity, yeah.
It's just the type of entitlement that allows the individual seller to use it.
I'm learning.
Commissioners, any other questions?
No, I think, you know, you said early on that you picked up on some of the concerns about the sheltering the views and protecting the, the neighbors and that, so as long as that's focused on, I think that's one of the areas we're pretty adamant about.
What is the distance from your driveway or entrance from Sampson Trail?
I mapped it out today using the ruler on GIS, and I, you know, this is not exact, but the corner parcel there is 175 feet deep, then another 62 to the edge of the access. So 175 plus another maybe 75, or let's call it 70 to access, which is 245 feet.
And the other.
Just to confirm, this is on the southeast corner of Sampson and Elo, and butts up to houses, correct?
The, yeah, I missed who the question came from, so I apologize, but the location is on the corner, it is not on the corner, but it is on Elo Road, thank you very much. There's a parcel, it is on Elo Road, south of Elo and east of Sampson Trail.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to confirm where exactly this was on that corner and which plots it was next to, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, and we'll see you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Now, we don't have any items on the consent agenda, so again, we will move, or previously we have moved Design Review 2111 up due to scheduling prior to the design of the Stockton Drive property, DR 2044. So at this point, Lindsey or Amber Green, are you here, or is there somebody representing you? Chris Lane, 1040 Chris Lane?
Chairman Lyons, Mr. Green had to take off for his previously scheduled meeting.
So we still got too late for him anyway.
Yep. You know, but yeah, he says it's just fine if we continue it, or if you feel it is appropriate to approve it tonight, you may do so. My recommendation would be to have the, proceed with the meeting and deliberation, and if you have any questions for him or anything that you'd like clarified, just continue it next week.
Okay. Well, then we'll just, I guess, stay with our original schedule for everyone else, and let's move that to the end. Since he's not here, and for everybody else's time. I don't know if we need to move the motion for that, but I think we just move it to the end in respect of everybody else's time. Just to keep it, okay, so they'll entertain a motion to move Design Review 21-11 to the end of new business.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. Okay, back to Design Review 2014, 641 Stockton Drive, that is Charles Carby, I think he's here.
Hello, everyone, thanks for coming and having me. I have a property that we've had several public hearings on. It was instructed by the council or commission to get higher architects for landscape and design of the building. And I believe I might have some depictions of that proposal. Oh, thank you for asking. I think the most important thing, here we are. So there's the existing building on the top left, and the proposed on the right.
If you want me to move around or anything, you gotta let me know.
I was hoping that you had a chance to maybe discuss with one of your peers and anybody else who had their concerns preliminarily before we got to this meeting about what is proposed by Susan or Sarah Whipple.
This is your portion of the presentation, so.
Yeah, whatever you want to do.
I will let you do your thing, and then once you're done, I'll do my thing.
Any other changes?
Yeah, so we superimposed, because that was requested, to have a virtual design of the landscape against the building. So I don't know what the count is on the trees. 100, I mean, we have to see what actually fits. Logistically with the boulder, and we want to separate conifers from deciduous trees and make sure that we have, you know, appropriate layout of everything, but that's kind of how it's laying out. That's a view from South Sampson. Again, what was requested, and, you know, I just, I'm a one-man show, so I didn't have the time to make those treatments for the windows and the poles and beams and whatnot, but I think it looks more residential by having the window additions and the garage doors, as well as casing the windows with cedar wood. There's maybe 70 trees existing on the property as it is. So really, the majority of the work will be buffering the front of the building and the northwest side, I guess you would say, with permanent trees.
Do you plan on irrigating?
Yeah, it'll be full-time irrigation, yeah. I've already had a well put in last year with 24 gallons a minute. So we have ample water, I've already had the power run to the transformer, and the septic system is set back enough to where we can line that area also with trees and still have our berm.
The easement that you've come down to the property, just going to have that just for you? I think I asked this before, but it's just for you, so when you're doing the berm and everything, it's not affecting anybody else?
No, correct, correct, yeah, every parcel in that area has access from either Kron or from South Sampson or from Stockton.
Just want to make sure that it wasn't going to blow, I didn't think it was, but just.
Yep.
And I know you mentioned on the landscaping plan, you're not quite aware of the amount of trees, but is it going to be more evergreen, something that's going to be a constant block?
Yeah, there'll be, I think it's aspens.
I mean, the aspens are going to lose their leaves, so it's going to.
I think it's a mix of conifers and deciduous, I mean, I know that it is a mix, but I don't know exactly what Dan Quackenbush proposed, but at least half of them will be an evergreen. And it'll just mix with the sugar pines and firs that are there.
12 Colorado spruce, 10 Norway spruce, and 13 aspens.
All right. Have a staff report?
I think that's what was requested, so I think.
Yeah, it's all. I know you, we talked about windows, we talked about.
Yeah, windows, the beams.
Additional windows, I like what you did over the garage door.
Helps quite a bit.
Yeah, it does help a lot.
A little eyebrow there, you know.
Well, I don't know if we need another staff report or not, since we've had it multiple times. But I guess, Brian, is there anything else to add? I know we've had this in front of us multiple times. And it seems to have applied or done quite a bit of what was asked?
Yep, yeah, so, yeah, like you said, this has been on the agenda, I think this is the fifth or sixth hearing on it now. It, yeah, the last time it was requested, add berm along the foundries, plant substantial trees, get some renderings, and professional design work for both landscaping and the architecture. What he submitted is pretty consistent with what was requested. We did get a public comment earlier today requesting a few things, discussing landscaping a little bit and irrigation of the site. Mr. Carby has indicated that there is irrigation available and will be utilized. The landscaping along the western property boundary. The landscaping along the western property boundary, uh, is located within the access easement for the property. It would be wise, I think, to get a additional approval, to get, uh, revised easement agreement between Mr. Carpe and the property owner to the west, um, to allow for that landscaping to exist and.
I'd be glad to finish that. Susie, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Susie SBI did talk with her before, when I was proposing what we were going to do as a landscaping. So I, I should be glad to write something up or whatever.
Yeah, uh, with that, I stand for any questions?
I don't have any, based on, I mean, pretty much covered everything we talked about. I know, uh, the commission is fairly new, uh, we went through this many times. Um, again, adding windows, adding multiple things, you can see the difference between the two structures or the two renderings. The building is in existence, um, there were some errors to get it to this point from building department. And so it's kind of what got us here, doing a design review now instead of with initial application. Uh, many of those items have been obviously addressed. Uh, so any commissioners have any questions on anything else before we go to a public hearing? All right?
Well.
At this point, we'll open it up to a public hearing. Um, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And we will start with, anybody here? I don't, we've got a list of people. Is anybody here in the audience here to speak on this project? No? Do we have anybody online that would like to speak? You may be muted, you need to hit star six, and it takes fifteen, twenty seconds or so possibly to come off mute, but if there's anybody online that would like to speak, uh, just chime in, let us know. Again, star six to unmute yourself. I don't see anyone there, so if there's no other items, we will close the public hearing. Oh, sorry.
Two things, I see, uh, three, one, five, seven, eight, nine, eight came off mute.
Oh, they've been off mute, Brian.
Oh, okay. Um, then the other thing is the, uh, new commissioner, so everybody except for Chairman Lyons and Commissioner Tunnel, uh, if you wish to vote on this, uh, you need to state that you have reviewed all of the previous, uh, hearings on this item and minutes, uh, for the record.
I would like to state that I have reviewed all of the previous hearings and reviewed all the materials previously for this issue.
It gives us three.
This is Commissioner Kinzer. I've reviewed all the previous minutes and the previous hearings.
Tony and Christine?
This is Commissioner Moss, and I have reviewed all the information to make a decision on this particular issue.
This is Commissioner Nemec. I also have reviewed all of the previous hearings and minutes for this application.
All right.
So, Brian, was there, um, any, uh, stipulations that, that, uh, that we need to include if we make a recommendation or if we make a motion to approve?
Um, the one with the easement to allow for the some landscaping easement.
Okay.
One.
Sorry, Brian, were you going to say something? No. I would like to consider adding, I, I know the applicant has stated that it's going to be irrigated, but we don't actually have that listed as a condition. Do we need to? What's that smile for?
I smile.
Brian's smiling.
Who's smiling?
It's enough. Can't smile.
Brian, have you updated the conditions to include the irrigation?
No, um, I'm not. If you wish to include conditions of approval regarding landscape easement, um, in the access movement area and/or irrigation plans, uh, include that in your motion, please.
And what about, I'm just wondering if in addition to just access, if we need to include anything about maintenance for the future? Should this owner sell the property so that there's no confusion as to whose responsibility it is to maintain that landscaping down the road?
Yes, that would also be a prudent thing to include in the issue of approval.
So, this is Commissioner Kinzer. I would also agree that I would like to, um, at least in my mind, include the, the window trimming and the shed roof over the garage, um, in the conditions of approval.
I believe that is on item number five, um, that includes the modifications to the building as he has been presented to us. I think we're covered with that.
Okay. I didn't know if we needed to explicitly state that along with the irrigation. But if we're covered, that's good.
Yeah, it goes over that the applicant shall make all modification, or prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall make all modifications to the buildings identified in the approved set of building plans. So as long as those items are in the plans, which obviously they are, then that would be required to be done prior to certificate of occupancy.
Good, thank you.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it, make it a motion that we approve, uh, design review twenty-fourty-four, including the existing conditions with the addition of requiring an irrigation plan, a landscaping easement, um, document, and a plan for, um, requiring future property owners to continue to be obligated to, uh, make sure that the landscaping on the easement and their property be adequately irrigated.
A second.
All right, we have a motion for, in a second. I think we'll do a roll call vote on this one. Ryan?
Approve.
Professor Kinzer?
Approve.
Professor Nemec?
Approve.
Professor Rock?
Approve.
Professor Tunnel?
Approve.
Professor Moss?
Approve.
Professor Lyons?
Yes. Hey, motion has been approved.
Thank you for your time.
He's a happy camper. All right.
Good to work.
We'll move on to design review twenty-one thirty-six, one eleven West Lake Street. Is Lucas Benoy, are you here or online?
Uh, I'm online.
All right.
This is Luke, don't call me Lucas Benoy.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to.
McCall Design Plan, uh, we're at one twenty-one Commerce Street. This is, uh, scenic route and shoreline designer view application for fifty-two hundred square foot home. Left, West Lake Street. Um, Brian, can I share my screen and, um?
Yeah, whenever you're ready, just go ahead, there we go.
That work? Okay, you guys looking at my screen now?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, uh, to get you oriented, this is across from the Forest Service Building, on Forest Service Campus, um, on Lake Street, just west of Mission Street here. And you're probably, uh, all familiar with this site as the, uh, the former Warren Brown home. And so a little backstory on this, the Kettleinsky's purchased this property with the intention of doing a, a major remodel of the Warren Brown home, a major interior remodel and leaving the exterior essentially the same with the change of some windows set on the lakeside. Um, and so this time last year, we were deep in design on this remodel of the, of the foreign, of the Warren Brown house and, and added design we all really liked. About this time last year, we started into demo and got it down to studs and, um, realized that we had some pretty major structural issues to deal with. Um, when power was cut to the sun pump in the basement, we realized we had some major water issues to deal with. And so what we were going to be up against to remodel Warren Brown House was, um, essentially tearing it down to the foundation, excavating around the foundation to come up with a good plan to de-water it and then rebuilding it like it was. And unfortunately, the, the project was really non-conforming, and so we weren't going to be able to do new construction to match what was there. So, uh, the plan then shifted to start from scratch. So, get you oriented on the site and what we're actually proposing here. Um, this is actually one of the few, one of the few pieces on Lake Street that has a sidewalk. So there's an existing sidewalk there, then there's a low stone wall that will remain. It's about bench height. Looks like, uh, that there. And then the existing guest house behind it, um, the Kettleinsky's are actually working with the city right now to relocate that and donate it as affordable housing, as part of the affordable housing program. So that will go away. Then we're proposing back, thirty-five feet back and heavily landscaped will be a four-foot stone wall with a gate. The new drive comes into a side loaded garage. And the idea of an side loaded garage is that the short side of it is seen from the street, the long dimension of the garage doesn't face the street, and that gives you a view of the actual entry. And we took special care in siding this house to, to save some really significant trees on this site. This is a thirty-eight inch diameter spruce here. This is, uh, I think that says forty-eight inch fir, it's, it's a monster. Yeah. And then there's a big thirty-eight inch ponderosa here and a forty-eight inch ponderosa here. So, um, saving all the significant trees on the site. If you look, one of the really nicest features of this property is an existing patio, an existing stretch of beach, and existing stone wall. So they're lucky in that all their lakeside landscaping is already done, and that's all going to be left intact and as it is. Um, so here's some shots of the existing site. Here's the footprint of the old brown house that's been scraped and filled in. This is the old concrete drive here, and you can see that, that really nice stone wall, um, with the beach above and then the existing patio. And then this is that guest house to be relocated in the background. And you can see the big mature trees that we're saving. So we worked with, uh, Dan Quick and Boege River Chase Design, and he's developed a really nice landscape plan. And he has addressed the comments that were in the staff report, uh, regarding, uh, numbers of trees and plantings. But this is that existing low stone wall out front, then we've got a nice, small landscape lawn area, and then the wall will be heavily treed and shrubbed, um, to obscure it. Here's the gate. Plantings, uh, trees, evergreens and deciduous down both property lines to provide screening from the neighbors. Um, and then this small section of lawn to remain, it's about a third the amount of lawn that they had before on the lakeside, and then the existing patio, um, existing beach. You can see where you're at. Go back up here. We set the house so that it's about nine feet behind the fifty-foot setback at its closest point, and, uh, it's about seventy-eight feet from the property, from the high watermark at the northwest corner. So we're not cramming it right up against the fifty-foot setback like you see a lot on lake development. These are some renderings of the home and what it'll look like with landscaping. You can see that the stone wall is nicely scrubbed up and obscured from view. The idea was to create some transparency through the entry to the lake from the street side. Shot of the entry, um, and then this is the lake view. This is the lower level floor plan, um, so cover patio, the deck, um, lounge, small kitchen and a suite. Main level, you get the entry, great room, dining kitchen, stair up, and this is the master suite, and it all opens up onto a deck. And then here's that three-car garage with the, um, doors side loaded. And then this is the upper level with another couple bedrooms and that. Here are some three D renderings, uh, of the form. What we're trying to do here is create a lot of, uh, shed roof forms, uh, kind of a mountain modern style. Creating a really simple roof that isn't going to have a lot of complications. Um, no valleys in this roof, which is something we love to see. Valleys tend to cause ice issues and climate, of course. And this gives you an idea of the material palette, uh, it's kind of a mountain modern look. So we're looking at the stone, steel and wood. Uh, this wood siding we're using is, uh, is a charred wood, so it's actually been light and brown and orange. Give it a look. Trying to, you know, even though it's got a, an upper level here, we're trying to make sure everything steps down with the natural contours and down to the property line, so the highest point of the volume's in the center and, and things step down and get, as they come to the side. So we've got a, we've got a quick fly-through that we've done of this, if you, if you don't mind, it'll only take about ninety seconds. Some really inspirational music, too. All right, so with that, I'm happy to take any questions we may have.
I think you did a great job.
It was a beautiful house.
Luke, I noticed that on the conditions of approval they have that there will be, am I reading that right? There'll be a revised plan with no fencing or walls between the residents in the West Lake? Have they talked, have there been discussion on that?
Yeah, um, Brian was nice enough to share his staff report with us a couple weeks in advance, and we had a meeting with Brian and Meredith. We ended up. We ended up lowering the wall to four feet to conform with Section 3.8.10. You know, there's a section in the code that addresses fences and walls, and they're allowable. You know, I think, I think we feel like we're in a good spot on that one. And, you know, to be honest with you, if you can, if you want to go ahead and drive that section from Rotary Park onto Mission Street and look at how many fences or walls are along there, it's the majority of that section. And for good reason, I mean, it's the main north-south highway in the state of Idaho. And so I understand why people want some visual and some noise protection from that along that section.
Okay. Maybe we'll go to staff report, Brian?
Yeah, so they said this is 111 West Lake Street. The staff report gets into a little bit. The overall design is very solid, it's consistent with the general design guidelines. The landscaping on the lakeside, we have prohibition at the 50-foot shoreline setback for walls, perched beaches, patios, and lawns. I think this has all of those, but it is an existing non-conforming thing, so long as they don't mess with the landscaping in there, it can remain. Any future modifications, they're going to have to bring the whole site into compliance. The, on the scenic route side, there is the wall there. The plans that are in your packets include a six-foot linear wall. They have proposed a separated kind of undulating sectioned wall to provide some openings and avoid the blank wall or prohibition, as long as you're not looking at it head-on. They've also put mixed rail landscaping in between the wall and the street there to assist in the blank wall issue and lowered it to four feet in height. Again, city's preferences for no walls on scenic route and to provide a strong relationship between the building and the street. I understand what the applicant is requesting with regards to privacy and noise, and I understand where they're coming from. So I just kind of leave that up to the commission to determine if that makes sense. There's also the main entrance facing, or on the longest street-facing wall that is also been addressed in the plans that were presented tonight, in this whole different than their staff report. They've added a door to the, a man door to the garage facing the street there, so that it has the appearance of an entrance on the longest street-facing side. It's been a little up in the air, I think, how it's been interpreted in the past with regard to side-loaded garages in that code section. Bring that to your attention. But yeah, other than that, I think this application looks pretty great. As I mentioned, they are working with the city to relocate the existing structure that is on there as a affordable housing unit, which we're pretty excited about. I'll stand for your question.
All right, commissioners, do you have any questions for Brian or the applicant at this point?
Nope.
All right, well, this is a public hearing, so we'll move to the public hearing. I'm guessing there is nobody here in the audience that wants to speak regarding this application? Is there anybody online that would like to speak on this application? Again, remember hit star six if you're muted.
I would love to move in and take care of it when there's not.
Caretaker, you got a caretaker on here. I'll supervise the B cherry. Okay, I don't see anything. We will have anybody asking for comment, so we will close the public hearing. And commissioners, some discussion.
I think it's a nice addition to Lake Street. It's a beautiful home, and it looks like it's done up really well.
It contains the spirit and intent of what was there.
Mm-hmm, yep.
May I guess the one question is the wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. If you read fences and walls, guidelines, I don't see that there's an issue.
And now that they lowered it to the four foot.
Yeah, and they've done landscaping between the low wall and the new wall. And I think it's very tastefully done. It's, yeah. Reading the Call Design Guideline, it doesn't bother me at all.
I agree completely with you.
So I, that unless there's other discussion.
Any other comments from anybody online? Ryan, Christine?
No.
Nope.
So then, well, there is one more question. The condition of approval talks about applicants shall provide a revised landscape plan showing a minimum of 10 native trees and 30 native shrubs located between West Lake Street and the front lawn area. Minimum of five of those trees shall be evergreen trees. Is that something that you've already discussed with the applicant or?
Commissioner Connolly, yes, we discussed that. I think that has been addressed in the surveyed landscape plan. I've not had a thorough chance to review it with the chaos of getting ready for this meeting. I recommend leaving that condition of approval as is so that I can confirm that the surveyed landscape plans are correct.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we approve Design Review 2136, 111 West Lake Street, with removal of the item number two under conditions of approval relating to the fencing.
Don't we want to make it a, change it from no fencing to with a four-foot fence as proposed?
Well, I think they've addressed, I mean, I thought the design addressed the lowering the fence. So I was just going to say we remove that item number two, and the designs let them speak for themselves, I guess. Does that make sense or not?
Commissioner Connolly, I would say with the fence plan as identified in the presentation tonight or something to that effect.
Okay, just to make sure it's not the six foot.
Yeah, so we'll replace number two with noting the adjustment in the fence plan that's been made and as presented to the commissioners. I don't know if I could repeat that.
Yes.
So I try to repeat it. So I'll make a motion that we approve Design Review 2136 with the exception that number two on the condition of approval be changed to show that the fencing will be, is okay as presented to the commissioners at this meeting. And that, and that's it, I guess.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Let's do a voice vote. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, yes, everybody.
Aye.
In favor, I should say, I'm sorry. All right, motion has passed. All right, and we'll go to Design Review 2139 at 1415 Warren Wagon Road. Todd Allen Construction for Leonard Jordan. Todd here to present for who we have?
Hi, I'm not Todd Allen, but I am representing the client.
All right.
With David Pugh.
Could you please state name and address?
My name's Janet Jarvis, and I'm representing the Jarvis Group on the house and 1415 Wagon Wheel Road. So the client has owned the property for 20 years. It's actually in Valley County, but it's in the city of McCallus, where it's impact. They're lots, and the original cabin that was built in 1930 that they've been living in for 20 years was non-conforming and in the middle of the two lots. So the two lots were never combined at any time. So what we are doing is moving the existing cabin and putting it on a new lot and doing a house on the adjacent lot next to it. And we're well back from the 50-foot setback, and we are going to be keeping a lot of the mature trees. Our goal was to make the house as unobtrusive as possible from the lake by keeping a large majority of the trees, creating a large deck from the 50-foot setback back, so the house is setback. The house is done in segments, and I think it's a little confusing on the application that the height of the existing guest house is 21 feet. And all the portions of the house, except for the portion that's in the back, are between 16 and 24 feet. So the client wanted to keep a low-impact profile from the lake. The materials that we're going to be using are on the board in front of us, which will be, slide down, which will be barnwood, a combination of barnwood and a tumble Montana moss stone. The existing road on the property, when the client was arriving out of the road, someone had to go up to the top of the road on Warren Wagon Road to make sure their car wasn't coming, because it's so steep at the top, there was no place to actually pull out on Warren Wagon Road. Also, a portion of the property was across Warren Wagon Road, which the applicant is going to be dedicating to the city. And we are not using that part of our lot to calculate our square footage. So we're trying to make the driveway much safer with Dave's help, trying to maintain a lot of the natural landscape and make the house as fit in with the natural colors. So I just wanted to, this represents the overall height of the house. So I just.
Yeah, I think he has that, he can pull that one out. He's got one of those in there, yeah.
Sheet ASK 007. Anyway, it's just indicating all the heights of the house. So, um, let me drop something else off here. Yeah, so you should have a 3.4, is that correct, fine? Which is the rendering of the house. So this is where we're moving the guest house to, and we're pushing it back from the 50-foot setback about 20 feet and adding a large deck on it. This is the main house, and as you can see, the part that's in the back that goes up the hill toward the driveway is the only part of the house that's two-story. The rest of the houses on the lakeside is all one-story. Using, we'll be doing a combination of a sheet and metal roof. And we'll be using steel windows and barnwood, which is on the material board, which is on a 3.3. We have worked with press line to do all of our water management. There is a city sewer line that goes through the property. It has to be relocated, and I'll let Dave go through maybe the landscape plan the entry to the lakeside.
Brian, if we could go to the site plan, please? Oh, sorry, my name's Dave Pugh, 303 Colorado Street, I'm with Apitos. Perfect, thanks. So as Janet was mentioning, the existing cabin sits right here. And that drainage, that, the stormwater drain goes right through the middle of this right here. So what we're doing is relocating that up into this area right here. The existing driveway, as she mentioned, comes off here very, very steep. And we are crossing over a little bit onto the Driscoll property, but we have approval from the Driscolls to do that, because they want to see it safer as well. And I'd like to take a minute to say that Dawn passed away last week. He was a good friend. Anyway, we're creating a garage over here on this other property. And there was an existing driveway that came down here. We are relocating the driveway over here so we can get a better grade. The entire site through here is just chock full of very mature spruce trees, and we are maintaining as many of them as possible. You can see in here, we've got some boulder walls that are protecting some of the larger ones. And then we're also coming back in and adding a bunch of spruce trees along here. The way the house is situated is we've got an interior courtyard that'll be heavily landscaped. And then, as Janet mentioned, we've got a large terrace out here. The 50-foot setback runs right through here. The exist, the existing slope of the site is an existing lawn that comes down here. And I mentioned it to the Jordans that if you want to keep a natural mowable lawn, that you can't touch anything, which is what was happening on the Warren Brown property. They didn't touch anything, so they could keep it, it's kind of grandfathered in. But there was an existing railroad tie wall going along here. It was eroding, and the lawn is too steep for them to use. And so what we elected to do is come back in here. In fact, it's already in, we worked with not OR.
Department of Land?
Department of Land or? Yeah, Department of Land.
Yes.
To get this approved, this was just finished recently. What we're doing in here is we're then creating a little bit flatter area in this, in this location. And all of this pale green area in here is going to be Idaho fescue, so it's the native, it's the native grass. And then these are stepping stone walkways. It looks like a regular pathway here, but they are actually just stepping stones that have mosses and things like that in between to make it much more natural going down to the existing dock, which is in place right here. There's a huge ponderosa right here. We're built, the deck that's going to be built off of the existing relocated guest house will be built around the ponderosa. I think that's kind of just. Brian, I'm not sure if you have any of the images that we sent you related to the stepping stone walkways down stone walkways down to the, down to the, there you go. Thanks. So we want something that's very natural looking with, like I said, with mosses and thyme and things like that in between the, in between the stones to, to create the walk. Can we, one more time, back to the site plan, please? So as, as Janet mentioned, there's a lot of existing trees between the existing house and the lake. They want to maintain as many of those as possible. And so there, there's three large spruce right in this area. There's an aspen here, aspen here, a couple of aspen in here, and a mix of spruce and aspen in this location. We're going to save all of those. And that's where you see these planted areas and some retaining with the natural stone. And so if we go, if we can go back, Brian, to the rendering from the lakeside. These are the existing large trees in here. There's, there's the, sorry, spruce in here, huge ponderosas over in here. So we want to, we're, we're saving all of those trees and then adding vegetation on the lower areas. So I think it's, it's going to break the, the visuals of the house down quite a bit. And because Janet kept the house at one story, it's not your usual three stories on the lakeside because they cut in a, you know, a daylight basement and then went two stories up. This is just low profile and I think it's very tastefully done. You guys have any questions?
She mentioned that, I guess, the lot originally went on the other side of Warren Wagon. There's a portion of the property you're going to do.
It's actually on the road.
Yeah. On the road. Do you have a showing what that?
Yeah, if you could go back to the.
Our site plan, I think, a one. Here it is right here. So it's this area right here.
Oh, so it just goes into the road.
It's right here.
Goes right here.
Okay, just into the road. So it's not the other side of the road, just into the road.
No, just into the road.
It's the, it's the strangest. Never seen anything like it. So that little piece is going to get dedicated. Oh, it, hang on a second. Here's the existing storm drain. We're relocating it over here and describing an easement for that as well.
All right, we have a staff report.
Chairman Lyons, thank you. Yeah, as the applicant has stated, this is a pretty solid architectural design. A lot of the pretty good use of topography, pretty low profile, high quality architectural materials. A few housekeeping conditions of approval regarding getting a record survey done, driveway shared access agreement for in the event that the ownership should change in the future. The one thing that I kind of wanted to bring to your attention, the lot coverage calculation utilizes, is not including the stepping stone pathways down towards the lake. With that calculation, they're about a hundred percent, a hundred and seven percent of their allowable. Because they are proposing to use the large stones with the substantial mosses and grasses, things like that between. It's my opinion that that needs the intent of code with regard to aesthetics and greenery and drainage and things like that. But yeah, I just wanted to highlight that. And with that, I'll stand for your questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for staff? All right, this is a public hearing, so we'll open it up to a public hearing. Guessing there's nobody here who has any questions within the room. Anybody online that has any comments or questions, or comments, I should say, for this application? Again, star six, unmute yourself. Guessing we probably don't have anybody. Now the next one. All right, in that case, we will close the public hearing and have discussion. Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant, any thoughts? I mean, it looks pretty wet and dry. I would even guess that without, if they had that extra land that's given, could be given to the city, they probably would be within the lot coverage. So it's kind of a wash there. I don't really see any thing that jumps out to me. It is nice to have a single level home kind of blended in there instead of some great big thing looking out at you. Christine Ryan, any questions on your guys?
None for me.
None for me.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
I move to.
Go ahead.
I move to approve Design Review Application twenty one dash thirty nine. We have to do the.
Yep.
The scenic route and the scoreline. Do you have to name all three application numbers?
Yep.
Okay, so I move to, to approve Design Review Application twenty one thirty nine, scenic route application twenty one twenty, and scoreline application twenty one fourteen.
Second.
And procedurally, do they need to say what conditions as stated or move to approve is adequate?
With the conditions as stated.
And we have a second. Do a voice vote? Or, yeah, here's a voice vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion has passed. All right, for the one we've all been waiting for. Okay, we'll move on to conditional use permit twenty one oh four and Design Review twenty one thirty eight, twenty one, excuse me, twenty one thirty eight for two oh one Rio Vista Boulevard. And we have.
Before you get out of that one, we should continue the CUP twenty one oh three. So open the hearing, move to, vote, continue it to the January fourth meeting and then vote on that.
Oh, you mean the one on Chris?
For the middle school.
Oh, I thought that was just withdrawn.
No, it's going to be the next month.
Okay, we get a motion to, I guess, move CUP twenty one oh three to the next meeting?
It's specific, so January.
Oh, January fourth? Continue it to January fourth, two thousand twenty two.
Yeah, I make a motion that we continue CUP twenty one oh three to January fourth.
I second.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion fast. Now we shall move on to a conditional use permit twenty one oh four, Design Review twenty one thirty eight, two oh one Rio Vista Boulevard. We have applicant.
Susan Evans.
Susan Evans, if you can make your name and address.
Okay, Susan Evans, and I'm here for two oh one Rio Vista. And Brian, I think has. So I'm just going to give a short overview on what we're proposing here. And then I think Brian has background. So, Brian, can I break to the background? It's not responding. I don't know what's going on.
Did he hear you?
What's happening?
I'm, I'm.
Can you hear?
I'm sorry, Brian, could you hear me?
Yeah, I, I can't tell.
Could you go to the background slide, just one more down? There we go.
Okay, apparently I don't like full screen.
So there's just been lots of different rumors going around lately. So I kind of wanted to give a really good overview of what we're thinking about for this conditional use permit. And essentially, this property has been on location at two oh one Rio Vista Boulevard since the early seventies. And back then, it was called the Northwest Passage Bed and Breakfast. And it has, and, and part of that, it was actually on the lake. It was built originally in the twenties. And it has a really great background for hospitality and a legacy for that, for both locals as well as visiting travelers and tourists. In the late twenties or in the late thirties, it actually was, hosted the cast for the movie that its name, it would have been named for, which is the Northwest Passage. I don't know whether you're familiar with that, some of the Goldies and Goodies, Spencer Tracy and some of those books. In the nineteen, twenty, nineteen and twenty timeframe, the building was refurbished by Colby Peters. And he did a really nice job kind of retaining the character and everything and bringing it all up to date. So he's preserving the legacy of it. It was purchased in November twenty twenty and is currently licensed as a bed and breakfast as well as a short term rental. And the idea is short term rental during the high season and bed and breakfast in the off season. Let's see. Okay, so since it was purchased, there has been an awful lot of work that's gone on to clean it up. It has been a potential fire hazard as far as a lot of the old dead trees and debris around. So a lot of that's been cleaned up. A lot of the noxious weeds have been removed and a lot of the building debris from the refurbishment has been removed from this, from the site. The location, I think, is really, really important to understand for this property. So it is very close to the Dine Hard Connector, just, just off, off of it essentially. It is on the south side of the road. Adjacent to the west is a large storage facility unit. Adjacent to the property south is industrial as well as sewage treatment plants. Adjacent to the property to the east is a vacant lot. And then further east, we move into the residential neighborhood for on Rio Vista. And then across the street to the north, there is new construction going in. I think it's R four rated, and there are several buildings that are being in the process of being built right now and a couple of homes that have already been finished. So that kind of gives you a general overview. And this is not, this is a, a view from Google Maps and it's of course not up to date. But I can still give you kind of a general idea. This is where the storage units are now. And then this is all the industrial you can see. This property kind of goes essentially all the way back right here. Okay. And this also shows, this is in Brian's presentation later, but it shows kind of what the strip looks like now. Here's the storage units. And actually, across the street over here now, there's multi-family units and things like that that have been built. I don't know what's planned for right here, but. Okay, so next slide. Thank you. So our request for this application is we want to be able to offer guests that are there for the short term rental. It's not going to be a single day kind of an idea. It is somebody that comes in with their, a wedding party or their, their family to stay at the property. And we have minimum stay requirements of at least three days on this property. And if they decide they would like to get married on the property or have a family reunion, we'd like to offer them that option to have. We have lots of room with the, the five acres and it's really nicely set up for that. It also offers a moderate price offering for something like this for moderate pricing and moderate sizes. And in a situation where it kind of fits in between something like it's fancy at Shore Lodge or some of the other lodges in town versus doing something kind of in the park in a much more intimate, personal setting. It provides revenue and opportunities for local business as well as our, our family property management company and the people that we have working for us. And the plan is to do a really nice job with the landscaping on this property and using as many of the indigenous plants around McCall. So there's already a lot of trees and everything on here. And there's a lot of wildflowers that we see in this, in the spring and summer. And we don't plan to take any of those out. We just want to enhance and actually add a lot more than what's existing there right now. So I mentioned earlier, we expect mostly small to moderate size events and maybe once or twice a year to have a maximum capacity of one hundred and ten. Quiet hours will be observed from ten to eight. And then there is no indoor assembly whatsoever. This property will only house nineteen people. And anytime there is a wedding or a ceremony or something like that, we will have the facilities brought in for like porta potties to have available. And then we also have gravel parking because there's lots of open section, as you can see on, on the previous slide on the picture. There is kind of space to bring in a nice gravel area for parking cars. And then we want to be able to provide the facilities for bicycles. And then as appropriate use, I would say this wouldn't happen very often, but it, for a couple of the larger events to use, to encourage public transportation and have an area to be able to drop people off and pick them up. So that's, and there would never be any parking on Rio Vista. We don't want to. Let's go on to the next one, which is how we plan to operate. Again, we are primarily a short term rental and then a B and B in the off season, as I had mentioned. Events would only be held periodically because not everybody that rents this property will want to have an event. Family and friends responsible type events, so wedding, family reunions, that kind of thing. We also would really like to bring back the character that this program had since the seventies of offering up a neighborhood gathering and barbecue once a year and invite the chamber out maybe periodically for a gathering or some of those kind of public things. We'd like to be able to do that. There would always be a manager anytime there was an event. And we would also have basic equipment provided onsite to minimize what's required for setup. And then this manager would make sure that any traffic that does come in is directed toward the connector at, on exit. We would work to minimize the noise, et cetera, observe the quiet hours and then have a direct line for our neighbors to be able to make a call to that person if there's, if they have any problem whatsoever. any problem whatsoever. Also, there is a significant elevation drop, and maybe we can show this a little bit later, Brian, when you have your information is, we can show a picture of the landscape plan. And if you look at where the road is, it drops down to where the houses, when you enter onto the property, and then down much further. I think it's a total of about 30 feet drop from the road down to where we would have the little catering tent or whatever, right? And any kind of music or anything would be directed towards the industrial area and sound typically carries, you know, downhill and out and away rather than back uphill. So we would really hope to minimize that for the neighbors. And then finally, let's go to the final slide here. Our goal is to actually revitalize a historic facility that has this legacy of generous hospitality. Instead of having to tear something down and build something new, we would like to just revitalize something that's just really got a great legacy already. It's, to me, the appropriate thing to do for tourists and local inhabitants. We want to, we think it helps preserve and enhance the character of this wonderful town. We want to be able to provide employment opportunities for local people, which we would through catering and the types of things that would be there periodically. And we actually want to be a really great neighbor and enhance the quality of the neighborhood. It's our desire. We don't have any desire to do anything else. And then finally, if the property is sold at some point in the future, we want to have such a fantastic reputation on how this has been managed that the new owners would not want to even think about compromising that in any way. So to summarize, periodic, smaller events in general at this property to fill a niche and a need here in the community. So that's, any questions on that before Brian goes into his?
Okay, great, thank you. All right, Brian, we have staff report. We can't hear you, you muted.
There we go. Property is at 201 Rio Vista Boulevard. It is, as the applicant has stated, adjacent to the industrial loop to the south, the storage condos to the west, and then several larger lots to the east prior to getting into the, more essentially, applied to Rio Vista subdivision. The applicant is requesting to have moderate onsite events, up to 110 people. Obviously, these sorts of things can lead to noise and parking issues and poor conduct in general. The applicant is proposing to mitigate these issues with a variety of things, using bus service where applicable and available, bicycle parking, and a shuttle service for later evening events, setting a curfew at 10:00 PM. There are a few other items that are conditioned approval in there. The purpose of a condition of use permit is to allow for additional modifications to make the proposed use appropriate for the site. So if you guys feel it is appropriate to add anything, any conditions of approval to this, that would be a good thing to do. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
They're proposing a bus stop, is that right?
Yes, they're proposing bus stop. I spoke on the phone with a representative of Treasury Valley Transit that said that that was favorable. There's a condition of approval to get the plans signed off by them as there are some standards regarding ADA access and pull-in, pull-out sort of things that agencies like to see.
Brian, does the condition of approval go with the property? The owner mentioned, you know, if they were ever to sell the property, does the condition of approval stay with that property?
Yes, the applications approved by the city council typically get recorded. This one would and would show up in a title search and be run with the land.
Any other questions for Brian or applicant at this point before we go to public comment?
Yes, I have a quick clarification question. In the pre-application period, dry camping was mentioned. I didn't see that mentioned here, so I'm assuming that that has been pulled and is no longer being considered?
That's correct. It was just an idea. Oh, am I not supposed to answer?
No, it's fine.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any other questions? All right. This is a public hearing. We'll open up to public hearing. I'd like to remind everyone that you're limited to three minutes. This will not be question and answer, it'll just be comments. So if you have questions, you can leave in your comments. We may address them, we ask the applicant afterwards, after the completion of the public hearing. And again, it's three minutes. I will have sort of alarm going off to let you know what's kind of done. So if you're in the middle of something, please kind of wrap it up within a few seconds after that would be great. And so we've got a good amount of people here, so I think we will start, and I will read down the list. Some of you have earmarked that you've opposed or no more in favor. I don't know if you all want to speak, but I'll just kind of go down the list. And if you don't want to speak, that's fine, just let me know you don't want to speak. You don't have to, just by signing on the list here. And then we'll move to everybody online. And the people there online, I'll go down the list of the phone numbers I have the same way. If you want to speak, great, you know, we'll just kind of go down the list. So with that, we will start with John Sanchez, or Joan Sanchez.
I'm here. I would like to reserve the right to speak after, because I'm kind of a backup for somebody online, so.
So you want to hold off until, just let me know when that one comes? Yeah, just keep you posted on that one. Dominic Galuza? Let's see, I saw you and you disappeared. I know, I know he's here.
Okay, Dominic Galuza, I'm the current resident of 297.
Just kidding, you got it. Never mind. Go on. I thought you were skipping your address.
All right, give me one second.
I put pause, so you're good.
Yeah, Dominic Galuza, I currently live at 297 Rio Vista. I'll be moving to 210 Rio Vista next June. And I've recently also developed 196, 200, and 206 Rio Vista Boulevard, which are directly across the street from the proposed project. I am here to speak in opposition to the project because it does not meet city CUP requirements. I also believe a event center would detrimentally change the personality of a great neighborhood in McCall. While I believe the commission has plenty of reasons to reject the CUP completely without this testimony, I would like to present this evidence to turn the panel from passing this CUP with stipulations. I would like to use permit number 2021-82, applied for by Evergreen Vista, Evergreen Gem Holdings, to show the character of the applicant. This application was to replace the current driveway on the property. They stated that the project would achieve three major objectives in their application. Those objectives were to reduce the grade of the existing driveway, to increase the visual privacy from the road for the entry, and to make the approach more attractive. The permit states that the existing driveway would be removed and that the work will be completed on 810 to 812 of this year. I have brought in a few photos to show my problems with this permit. Photo shot one, taken today, shows that the driveway still exists and is in use while the new driveway is complete. From living across the street or working across the street, I would say about 90% of Cloud Nine guests and everyone else coming and going is still using the original driveway. I was there today and I watched the owners use this driveway to leave the property while the new driveway is complete. I would also like to point out that the new driveway has been constructed with a eight-inch culvert while the city permit calls for a 15-inch culvert. And if you look at the culvert, the east end, which is the high end of the culvert, is completely buried by the driveway. And the west end, which is the low end, is sloped up so it does not drain water. I have one more issue, which I brought another photo. And this photo shows that along with the applied-for permitted driveway, these applicants have also constructed 150 feet of unpermitted driveway to the proposed event center. They are showing no respect for the code or this process. This is my point. If this application can, applicant cannot complete a simple driveway project to code, how can we trust them to meet conditions put upon a CUP by this commission to allow it, event center in our neighborhood? Please follow the CUP guidelines and preserve our neighborhood by voting no to this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you must have gone. Turn this around. Okay. Jody Galuza, you want to speak as well, or?
Yeah.
My volume happening, but.
All right. I'm Jody Galuza. I currently also live at 297 Rio Vista. Future residents to be 210 Rio Vista. I'm here to ask you to deny this application for many reasons. I'd like to start with CUP approval standard number one. The authors of our city code have included an informative chart which lists in great detail a table of both permitted and conditionally permitted uses. An event center is not listed under either category in a residential zone. Therefore, it is prudent to assume this was left off intentionally because it is not appropriate use even for a CUP application. I will group the next three together. Standard number two is the application harmonious with objectives of the comprehensive plan. CUP number four is, is an event center detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the neighborhood? And CUP standard number eight, does it involve activities of operation that will cause unreasonable production of traffic and noise? Answers, no, does not meet objectives of the comprehensive plan. Yes, it is detrimental to the neighborhood. Yes, it will cause noise and traffic. Page 27 of the comp plan says private property rights encompass not only the right to develop, but the right to hold and enjoy property as well. And that land use regulations must protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community avoiding any unnecessary conditions to raise or cost. The event center is in direct conflict with these standards. A loud event center with no limits or restrictions on noise during daytime hours and no limits of frequency events or frequency of events, endless traffic and parking violations, and intoxicated partygoers, does not line up with my ability to quiet enjoyment of my primary residence and home. What if my child or myself would like to sit on the porch and enjoy a beautiful summer Saturday afternoon of quiet? Let me ask you, would you want to listen to YMCA and the Chicken Dance on repeat from your back porch on a Saturday afternoon? Should residents have the burden of calling the police when our driveways are blocked by cars? The code does not define quiet hours. How is this enforceable? When it's too loud but midday, but it's not quiet hours, the city code says they can be as loud as they want. No decibel limits on noise levels. After 10:00 PM when it is quiet hours, now we are directed to call Valley County Dispatch because the McCall Police Department is understaffed? Should our police be asked to take these silly tasks rather than more important law enforcement duties? How long until the police stop responding to our calls? The staff report comment on this standard simply states that quiet hours exist from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM. That does not mean the noise will not affect the residents of the neighborhood. With a limit of 110 guests, there will be many more people and cars such as caterers, photographers, wedding planners, florists, DJs, et cetera. How are these bodies and their respective vehicles accounted for? It's a nice idea to think that partygoers will ride to and from the event on the city bus, but reality. Man, just, I'm so close, I promise. They will park on Rio Vista, in our driveways, and anywhere they can find a spot. Just look at 4th of July or Winter Carnival as examples of tourist behavior. Rio Vista Boulevard is an essential thoroughfare for residents of Rio Vista. It is unacceptable for the access to our homes to be blocked for an unnecessary event center. Lastly, who does the event center benefit? Out-of-town tourists. Who does it hurt? The local residents who live, work, volunteer, and contribute to the better good of our community. Please deny this application. This is not in McCall's best interest and does not meet at least five of the 12 CUP standards as outlined in the McCall City Code.
We have Matt Brewster.
Hello, my name is Matt Brewster, speaking on behalf of our family, the owners of 200 Rio Vista Boulevard, directly across the street from the proposed location. As full-time McCall residents, we have some serious concerns with the application as proposed. Firstly, I'm going to talk about parking. The amount of off-street proposed parking is, quite frankly, just inadequate for the number of proposed guests. The application states facilitating events up to 110 guests. We have to add on a few people to this, of course. As stated, the B&B structure is explicitly separate from the event, which means we have 19 more people. And we've got catering staff of five to 10, musicians and performers, another five to 10, and a potential wedding party, which could be another 20 people. We're very quickly approaching 150. Under these conditions, each vehicle would need to carry five people to the event to fit within the 30 provided or proposed parking spaces. And typically, at the weddings I've been to, at least typically, two people come per vehicle. And people like to drive their cars and not take public transit to a wedding event because you're dressed up, you know, you want to have control of your own destiny. So I think it's unreasonable to think that 30 cars is going to accommodate the number of guests that are going to be at these events in the larger case. Community transit is not going to work for these events. They only run till 7:00 p.m. I have never been to a wedding that concludes at that time. In the case of a wedding, all of these vehicles are likely to be leaving these events after dark. Many people have consumed alcohol and they will be exiting directly onto a residential neighborhood street, namely across from our residence. The residential nature of Rio Vista Boulevard is not really designed to accommodate this volume of traffic in a single place. The alignment of the two proposed egresses result in headlights shining directly into residential housing across the street, one home which already exists and the other is currently being built. And this seems pretty clearly incompatible with CUP standard 9, which states that the use not create a detrimental interference with traffic on surrounding public or private thoroughfares or adversely affect the pedestrian environment. Next, section 3.3.02 of the residential use regulations state that all uses, unless otherwise provided for in this title, shall be conducted within enclosed structures. Everything being proposed today is outdoors, as Jody previously mentioned. An event center is not in the table whatsoever. I'll wrap it up. So lastly, as parents of a two-year-old, the noise pollution is going to be extreme at these types of events and very disruptive to our daily lives. Standard AP clearly states that uses not involve operation that will cause unreasonable production of traffic or noise. So I think that this is clearly incompatible with the neighborhood in which it's being proposed based on the CUP standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Next, I think Dave's already here for something else, so I don't believe Dave's here anymore. Charlie Carpe, it was on his application. Janet Jarvis is already on something else. It's going to go better now. Bethany Stahl?
Stahl? Yeah. I thought it was bottom of the list.
Was your first name Brian or?
Brian Stahl.
Oh yeah, it's Brian, okay.
Yeah, go for Catherine, she's online, that's why.
But no, we'll do the online ones in a second, but it is Brian Stahl. You want to do after?
You don't have to speak, I'm watching.
Okay, so yeah, right. You know, I'm just here, this is off the cuff here, but while this meeting is, I guess, designed around the scope of the CUPs, this proposal fails on multiple counts on CUPs alone. I'm not going to go through the enumeration of the multiple CUPs that it fails on, but that said, the CUPs are there designed to protect the neighborhoods, the character McCall, the families that live here and work here, and this type of an event center proposal is totally incongruent with the families and the nature and the character of that neighborhood as it exists now. The folks that bought the place knew exactly what they had going into it, and the idea that even as the owner mentioned earlier, that should they sell the property at any time in the future, they would hope that the new owners would be good neighbors as well. Well, to me, that just indicates that they're looking to turn the property. They're looking to throw a couple of bucks at it, get the codes changed so they can get an upgrade, command maybe a little higher price, and then turn the property on a real estate deal with upgraded codes. Totally unacceptable again, as far as what the CUPs are there for, to protect the people that already live in that neighborhood as families. The owner also brings in a lot of the landscaping. You know, we're going to do this, we're trees and weeds and flowers, how pretty that is. You know what? None of this is about landscaping. So that as a advocacy for that property is, again, completely incongruent. Nobody's here to discuss or argue or talk about landscaping or trees or things of that nature. It's just talking about, you know, the color of the curtain and the carpets here. And I'm just going to wrap it up with this. I'm not the la- you're going to hear a lot more people speaking much more articulate than myself here, but this board exists to serve the code and to serve the community because the code is there to serve the community of that neighborhood. And you're going to hear a lot of voices, I think, that are going to be strongly opposed to this sort of event center as it's being labeled right now for a multitude of reasons. So the board is existing to serve the code, to serve the neighborhoods, and when you hear the opinions and the opposition in massive form that you're about to hear the rest of this night after me, it should be the conclusion of this board to deny the proposal and to just send it back and say, no, thank you. This is not something that we're really going to support for that neighborhood. And with that, I'm done.
Mr. Stahl, can I get your address for the record, please?
My who?
Your address.
227 Rio Vista.
All right. Daniel Brown.
Excuse me. Clear my throat here. Daniel Brown, 192 Rio Vista. I think as Brian just said, there's a lot of, there's 12 parts of the CUP standards that have to be met. I'm going to focus on three and four. Three, it must be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existence, existing or likely character of the neighborhood. So a neighborhood, when we think about a neighborhood, that's where we live, that's where we sleep, that's where we raise our kids. I personally am full-time, just bought a home less than 100 feet from the property, from property to property here. I have a just turned four-year-old and about to turn eight-year-old. We don't have air conditioning, so what I've learned my first summer is McCall air conditioning's an open window. And we got item number four, not to be detrimental to health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. American Academy of Pediatrics, ages three to five, 10 to 13 hours of sleep, recommended. Less sleep causes physical and emotional health issues with children. Nine to 12 hours for ages six to nine. So in McCall, when school is going on, we get to school at 8 o'clock, I have to wake my kids up at 6:30. If we backtrack that to get the 10 to 12 hours, we put our kids to bed like most adults with kids at age eight, 8:30. In the neighborhood meeting, we asked the applicants, hey, have you considered time zones? The quote was, nobody wants a party that ends early. Party. And my background, for four years, I owned an event and party rental company. And one thing I can tell you is we can look at parking, we can look at transit, we can look at lighting, we can look, we can look at a lot of things. You cannot engineer away human behavior. Parties get out of hand. Alcohol, yes. Music, yes. How do we keep that from getting to a level where our neighborhood is no longer a neighborhood? It's a noise and alcohol and touristy infused party barn. That's what we're afraid of. And the CUP, there's a lot of ambiguities. I heard words like smaller and maybe, one or two events with 110, but that's just ambiguities. There's nothing documented in there that says we will have two events four times a year at this site. It's all ambiguity. So the CUP as it lays now is an open door. And I hope that the commission can answer the single question that I ask myself. Would you want this in your neighborhood? Would you want it 100 feet property to property? I took some measurements myself today. 108 feet from my children's window to that new driveway Dominic told you about, and it's at this perfect angle where every light that comes out just comes right in the window. So to give scale to that, if we're on a football field, you're at the 25-yard line, that's where the goalpost is. Where their proposed music venue is going to be, according to the plans that we see here, that's 345 feet, same football field, goalpost to the middle of the next end zone. That's where our windows that are open in the summer are going to be from average decibels, according to some research I did online for wedding receptions for DJs, 95 to 110. That's pretty close to what a marching band sounds like. How loud is the marching band, even if it's facing the other sideline and you're standing in that end zone? You're not putting your kids to sleep, you're not enjoying a quality of life. So the fact that there's no restrictions, terms like quiet hours, smaller, maybe, please do us all a favor and deny this CUP. Thank you.
All right. Bye.
I'm at 225 Rio Vista Boulevard, right down the street, and I.
You give your, oh, full name.
Bonnie Bertram. And I have a little experience with wedding parties because I've owned a big restaurant in McCall for years. And after about the first six months of hosting a number of wedding receptions, we finally gave up hosting wedding receptions because the hotel across the street couldn't get any sleep. People will, you're going to have your wedding receptions outside, which is even worse. The noise will travel, as most of us know, and it'll be very disruptive for us, the neighborhood. And I feel bad that you've put your money into something and you were hoping to do something different with it, but you know, B&amp;B is one thing, but receptions and parties outside are a totally different thing. Being right across the street from homes that are being built right now is, it's really too bad. And I hope that you will consider this application as something that's non-conforming in a neighborhood. There's plenty of places in the county where people can open up these type of activities and be more secluded than a neighborhood is.
All right. That's all the people I have on the list. Is there anybody else here? I think we got everybody here.
I'd like just to make one quick.
Well, here, we'll have time for you to do a rebuttal afterwards. We've got more people on the phone, so you'll have a chance to.
I'll talk.
You want to talk now?
Yeah, I'll talk now.
Okay.
All right. Just for the record, I'll read a few.
Can you state your name and address?
Yes. My name is John Sanchez. I live on 101 Eagle Shores Court, right here on the other side of Rio Vista Pond. I also have friends who are not here, they're on a plane right now, so they asked me, they're at 214 Rio Vista Boulevard. We purchased our home a year ago. We love this neighborhood. It's a quiet neighborhood, you can walk at night, you can hear the river at night after 8 o'clock when the cars stop driving around, you can hear just about everything. And you can hear things all over, the sound carries quite a bit throughout this neighborhood. So there is no way that you can't have a party and not know that it's there. There's a part, there's a, every now and again, there's a neighbor that has a party on the loop and you can hear, you can hear the music. It just, it just goes right across. So to me, having an event center almost that could be every weekend near my home where I can't even go outside and listen to the river anymore, which I paid an enormous amount of money for, is actually offensive. And I would like to, you know, point out that, you know, that's something that would not be, I would be on the phone with the police, and then I'm wondering if the police will come, you know, on a regular basis because I imagine that everybody else in the neighborhood would probably feel the same way if there was this much noise. I'm also concerned about the traffic coming out, people cutting across, dying hard. I mean, trucks come through there if they're intoxicated, and I gather that people coming out of that parking lot will probably be close to the levels where they shouldn't be, may not see that light, and there could be danger. We travel that every single day, multiple times a day, my wife, my family, my friends. It just increases the danger, and since it's every weekend and it's in a place where I'm living, the chances of me being in danger are higher. I feel really bad for the people who are actually right next to this property. There's four new houses being built. My friend's purchased house six years ago, they go there on the weekends to get away from the world. They have a spa outside where they sit and relax and look at the trees. They will hear that music every day on the weekends. Every weekend, they probably wouldn't even want to come up anymore. There is the CUPs here to protect us, to protect our investments, to protect our health and safety, and I ask that you enforce them. And please deny this application. Thank you.
Now we will switch to the people online. I will read your phone numbers, and so the people with the phone numbers here, if you want to, as we go down the list, again, if you want to comment, let us know. If not, we'll skip to the next one. I don't know if they're all off mute, or we can do them as we go. All right. The first phone number we have is 208-283-2604. Again, you may need to hit star six if you happen to be muted. Going once, going twice. Just turned on.
Okay, I think I'm, I think I'm on now.
All right. If you can state your name and address.
My name's Brad Baralt, and I'm at 491 Verita Road, which is quite a considerable distance from the proposed venue compared to others that have spoke. My objection is just the noise. Obviously, a lot of that's going to drift across, across the highway bypass and hit our neighborhood. My neighbors have spoke very eloquently about the impacts to their quality of life. I can't imagine what this feels like to them. You know, I'm on the other side of the highway and I've got huge objections to it. It's a residential neighborhood, and honestly, when I first heard this, and really, it was just in, you know, conversations with neighbors, I thought it was, I thought it was an out-of-control rumor. I didn't think that anyone would have the nerve to propose such a venue in Rio Vista. I mean, really, seriously, I can't believe it's even being talked about. But here we are, and we're talking about it, and I guess that's very useful, but, you know, I think a couple of good points have been raised, and a serious consideration should be given to the points about law enforcement support. You know, somebody asked the question, when are they going to stop answering our calls? It won't take long, I can tell you that. You know, those guys are on tight budget, they don't have the bandwidth to deal with this. And it, and the other point I'll, I'll touch on and then I'll ring off, but the parking that's been talked about, the points about using public transport, riding the bus, and I thought it was darling that a bike rack was proposed. But seriously, if you look at people that are going to be attending a wedding, most of them are going to be from outside of McCall. Those that live here aren't going to ride the bus. People that are renting a car in Boise and driving up aren't going to ride the bus. Who's going to ride the bus? Everybody's going to have a car, and they're going to wind up parked on Rio Vista. There's no question about that. So think long and hard, please, before you guys pass your approval on this one. I would appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to phone number, again, 208-315-1276.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, so please state your name and address.
This is James K. Thackeray. We reside at our home at 284 Rio Vista Boulevard here in McCall. My wife, Martha, and I have owned this property and have been full-time residents for 34 to 35 years. We've seen a lot of development over the course of the years, a lot of activities happening. I am asking at this time, or we're asking at this time, that you do not approve the application for the conditional use permit. Like others have mentioned before us, a big concern for us, incidentally, we live east of the proposed site, about a half mile down Rio Vista. On night, summer nights now, as others have mentioned, it's usually very nice and quiet, and that's one of the things we really treasure about living here. But it's also, several times this summer, we hear bands performing from the Whitetail golf course, and that's much, much further, that's probably twice as far from our home as this proposed site will be. It's not terribly disturbing at that distance from Whitetail, but something that's that much closer will be disturbing even in our part of the Rio Vista neighborhood. We travel past that site several times a day, coming and going. There is one other main way in and out of Rio Vista, but for us and for our end of the neighborhood, most people, I think, come and go right past that location. I think although they are proposing and have mentioned parking space, I don't think, as has already been mentioned, that it's going to be anywhere near adequate for those times that they have a large number of people. I think there'll be a serious bottleneck right there at that part of the neighborhood. It'll be inconvenient, and it'll be, it'll be dangerous at times. We do feel that this proposal is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and we think it goes against and is not in compliance with the ordinances as they're now set up. So we do, with that, ask you to deny this. Thank you for your time. Thank you for considering my input.
All right, thanks, Jim. All right, and we'll go to phone number 208, oh, yeah, 315-7898.
Hello, my name's Pat Zach. I live at 316 Rio Vista and I really, probably going to echo what everyone else is saying. I'm really concerned about the noise. I'm concerned about possibility of people who are drunks driving around. And then that intersection is pretty tight as it is right now and has bad visibility from one side. There's a large post there. They'd very easily pull out and cause an accident. The noise, like Mr. Thatcher said earlier, sometimes you can hear music all the way from the brewery over there by the airport. And it, that noise just doesn't travel just downhill. It travels out. But, you know, it doesn't, it's not compatible with the, with, with the residential neighborhood. It's just not compatible with the CUP. I can't even see why it's being considered. So I'm just going to vote it being against the plan. It's just, it's just not a place for that type of facility. It's a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go to 208-602-8319. If you need to unmute yourself at star six, but again, 602-8319. Still out there? All right, we'll go to the next one. Okay, so 208, I believe that's 980-7863. Or it might be 880. I'm not sure. What do you have showing there, Mary?
That one's gone now, but I have 208-830-1448 next.
83014. I don't even have that on the list.
That'd be a new one.
Let's.
He's texting us. He's about to clip in.
Okay.
Which one?
1448.
Okay, we're going to go down the list and then we'll ask a final call and we'll get through the list. Okay, so we're going to go to 949-8745.
Is that a 949 area code?
It's 208-949-8745. Sorry.
Okay, that's not me yet.
Oh, you're down a couple more. All right.
No comment.
Okay, go down to another one. 603-660-1728. Again, star six. Hello.
Hi, my name is Ben Bruno and I live at 231 Ernesto Drive. So I'm adjacent to Rio Vista. And I think a lot of the folks have, that have spoken already have shared similar concerns to mine, but I'm opposed to the approval of this application. One of my main concerns is the large number of cars that would be passing through the neighborhood, most likely inhibited by, drivers inhibited by alcohol and that would be leaving after dark and would be detrimental to the safety of residents in the neighborhood. One of the things that I really value about living here has been to have a really quiet neighborhood to walk around in, to be able to see other folks in the neighborhood, walking around, walking dogs, walking with their kids. And I think it would be incredibly dangerous to allow for this amount of, of traffic to be, to be put into the neighborhood after these, these large events. And I think it's incongruent with the CUP standards. And I think it's, it's not reasonable to expect that the parking solutions will allow for this, this amount of cars to be, to be reduced as they've indicated. And so I'm, I'm hoping that this will, this will not be approved. I think it would, it would be a huge detriment to, to the neighborhood. And thank you for, for allowing us to participate and considering our, our opposition to this.
All right, thank you. All right, and we'll go to 805-705-5803. Are you there? 805-705-5803? Am I muted?
Microphone is on.
Only once, going twice.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yep.
That's Bob. Hi, this is Bob Joyce. I'm the trustee and resident of 232 Rio Vista Boulevard. And I'd like to clarify one thing that the lady speaker that represents 201 made. Noise. It does not travel downward and outward. Noise travels upward and outward. It's going to go over the neighborhoods of West Valley, Rio Vista, in the Caron Residential Neighborhood. And as a realtor, both here and in Southern California, predominantly in Santa Barbara, noise has been a detriment to real estate values. If anyone is familiar with Santa Barbara at all, my family owns a property on the Upper Rio Vista, the Upper Riviera, which is above the Santa Barbara Bowl on Highway 101. And when they're having concerts in 101, they're busy 24 hours a day. You can step out of the home and hear the traffic 24 hours a day. That is in regards to noise. One of my biggest concerns, and I'm, I'm in favor of an event center, but not in Rio Vista area, but somewhere out in the country, I'd be 100% in supportive. But in far as the intersection of Rio Vista and Boyston, there are no traffic signals. Now, I had, I operated a firewood processing business at 197 Industrial Loop for seven years. And I would have neighbors from the Rio Vista area call me and make polite complaints regarding our saws operating. Unfortunately for them, we were zoned properly and they could, but they could hear us cutting wood during daylight hours and splitting wood. So noise is truly an impact on the neighborhood. And as far as the traffic flow, my experience with loggers coming down from the intersection there where there are control lights, near Ridley's and the hardware store there, coming around the loop on Dine Hard and Boyston towards 55, going to the move down below New Meadows. They're traveling at 35, 40 miles an hour. These are 18-wheelers full of tons of green wood, heavy loads. And you should, and the visibility coming out of Rio Vista to the left is not good. And when we have a backup of cars at Rio Vista Boulevard and Boyston, those loggers are not going to like it. They cannot stop on a dime. What we're going to see is people coming out of the event center, turning to the right and traveling past 232, 227 and what have you, Rio Vista, headed around the loop or down Ernesto.
All right, Bob, if you could just a little bit and wrap it up.
Yeah, it's going to be increased a dangerous flow of traffic in the whole industrial loop. Forget the noise is a problem and everything else, but the traffic is going to be dangerous. Okay, I'm wrapping up there, Rob.
All right, thanks, Rob.
I hope you vote against it. Bye-bye.
All right, now we're to 949-395-2063.
I'm here.
All right, I knew you were. Now you name and address, please.
Name Katie Stoll. That's my husband Brian there. Our address is 227 Rio Vista. Taking off speaker. I wrote a letter and I decided I wanted to read it. I put a lot of time, thought and energy into it, so hopefully it's three minutes or less, but if it's a little over, I hope you'll indulge. Members of our family have attended the neighborhood meeting and read all available relevant documents in preparing our response. However, I would first like to share this anecdote. The first thing our 17-year-old son said after being told about the letter that was sent to one neighbor announcing the day and time of the neighborhood meeting was, quote, "Great." Like, "We need all of those drunks driving through our neighborhood," end quote. So the proposed use for this project is inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. The applicants assert that their project is a great segue from industrial to multifamily use to our four single-family homes across the street to the north and for our one homes further to the northeast. That's from their project description of October 25th. Here's the truth. The industrial loop is not part of our neighborhood, neither in fact nor in character. None of these businesses operate at night, nor do they bring any traffic into the Rio Vista neighborhood. The loop is accessed from three different drives off Dine Hard, as you probably all know. While the storage facility is accessed from Rio Vista, there are never more than a few vehicles accessing the property at any given time or on any given day. The CUP criteria of approval, objective number one, is not met. The Rio Vista neighborhood is actually a longstanding residential neighborhood with a majority of full-time owner occupied homes. In fact, of the 19 homes on the very first block of our section of Rio Vista, from Boyston to Ernesto, 12 are occupied or being built for full-time owner occupancy. Only two, including the Cloud Nine home, are short-term rentals. Further, there are nine children from preschool age to 17-years-old living in existing or under construction homes on this block. Nine children who play outside, ride bikes down the street, drive themselves around and who bring friends into the neighborhood to do the same thing. Children who need a safe, quiet neighborhood 24 hours a day, not just after 10:00 PM. The single-family homes that are built, being built right across the street from this proposed project are just that. Homes for more families like the ones who already live on Rio Vista. Susan said multifamily, they're not multifamily. There are not businesses that will bring traffic, noise and light pollution into a low-density residential neighborhood. So that's criteria number 2, 3, 8 and 12 not met. The proposal to direct amplified music away from the neighborhood toward the industrial loop as well as toward the Broken Ridge Townhomes and homes on Valley View Lane beyond will not protect, protect the surrounding neighborhood from chronic noise pollution. Several neighbors have mentioned the Whitetail Party. That is one mile from my home. I hear them and whatever 80's band they dug out of the mothballs every year clears the bell. Cloud Nine is .2 miles from my home. No, also, no amount of mitigation will keep amplified music on the confines of their property. The glare from downward-directed lights at the back of their property will be clearly visible from our existing residents at 213, 221 and 227 Rio Vista. That is CUP criteria number eight, objective not met. The project proposal tries to address traffic issue with unrealistic solutions. At the neighborhood meeting, owner Jim Evans acknowledged they anticipate most guests will drive their own cars. People do not ride bikes to weddings. People do not take public buses to weddings. Harlow's cannot be relied upon to provide shuttle service every time they have an event.
Katie, I need you to wrap it up. It's over your time, so if you can.
Okay, so that's objective number 11 not met. We've discussed the parking issue. They had eight cars at the house over Thanksgiving. If that was 19 people, that translates to 46 cars plus cars for staff at events. So we're looking at at least parking for 50 cars. So that's objectives four and nine not met. They will not be providing benefits to local businesses because all of these local businesses are already busy enough. They will be bringing in people from Boise area just as, as often as using, you know, McCall party rentals and delish catering. That's about it. Thank you. I hope, our family hopes that you will deny this application and not recommend that it be approved.
Thank you. All right, we've got number 972-897-2377.
Hi, everyone. This is Lee Brown at 192 Rio Vista. As a full-time McCall resident with small children, I oppose this proposal. Our neighborhood is beautifully dark and quiet and even with the industrial park and road, it's minimally noisy during the day and only during the day. In addition to the CUP violations that have been stated, the disruption and impact to my family's quality of life from the parking, noise, lights are significant. And the ways that have been outlined to mitigate these are unreasonable and unenforceable. I strongly ask you to deny this request.
All right, thank you. All right, we got three more. I was just going to answer. Okay, we got 208-830-1448. If you're, are they muted? Again, if you're out there, phone number 208-830-1448.
Lucy's having trouble with connectivity and just the connection's bad.
Can he text you what he wants to say and you can talk?
I'm going to tell him it's his turn. I don't know.
Okay, we'll skip over that and I'll come back just in case. Let me know what he says on his text. Okay, then we're going to go to 208-871-7038.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, sorry.
Which, which number is this?
I read that at 15.
Sorry, this is 1448. I was having some, I was having a hard time hearing you guys. I don't know what, if there's some Wi-Fi issues or anyway.
Okay, we'll go with that and I'll get you back to that next number in a second. So, okay, go ahead and name and address, please.
Sorry, Piers Lamb, 1078 Caron Street. I just wanted to say, I, somebody else mentioned this earlier that, you know, when they, when they heard about this rumor of this event center going in, they thought it was a rumor that had kind of gone, gone a little, little out of control and we couldn't believe it. Told my kids about it a while back and, and the first thing that my, my 14-year-old son said, he said, "Does that mean we're not going to get to go, you know, over to Matt, you know, ride our bikes over to Max's house over on Rio Vista?" We live just across the, of Boyston from this. And he said, you know, "Are we not going to be able to ride our bikes down there on weekends because of all the drunk drivers from the, from, from the weddings?" One of my main, main concerns with this is definitely noise. I think we all enjoy the beautiful evenings in McCall, the serene environment, the solitude, the peacefulness, the bright stars. I feel like this, this, this application, I think this, this could lead to just a ton of traffic. I feel terrible for everybody in that Rio Vista neighborhood, include, you know, including ourselves, but more for them. I just feel like it's, it's unnecessary. These ordinances, these CUPs are supposed to be, there's nothing that says it can be in a residential neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood. I feel like this is a slippery slope for other, you know, established, beautiful, quiet neighborhoods in McCall. And I just, there's so many, there's so many red flags in this that I just hope that they deny this, this application. And that's, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to 208-871-7038.
Yeah, am I still unmuted?
Yeah, I can hear you. Or we can hear you.
Okay. My name's Austin Edwards. I reside at 1513 Luisa Avenue in McCall. I really think this is actually a great project for this piece of land. When I think about the areas in McCall where you could actually have an event center, this is one of the very few ones I can think of, you know, to have an event center like this within the city limits. um, this is one of the very few ones I can think of, you know, to have an event center like this within the city limits. Um, it's a historic structure in McCall, I think it'd be very neat to see this bed and breakfast use at times the location, um, to host events. When we really think about event venues like are being proposed, um, I, you know, I, I'll get to noise in a second, but, you know, the frequency of these events is actually very limited, you know, um, that's something to keep in mind. Uh, the location is very well-suited for this, you know, with industrial to the south, Dewey Lagoons to the southeast, vacant lots to the east, storage units to the west, which actually front the same street and, you know, were the same zoning. Um, and then brand-new houses going in across the street to the north. Um, I really don't think there's many better places for this product. I also feel that McCall, the shortage of event spaces such as this, and it'd be wonderful to see this turned into something that can contribute to the culture of McCall, um, instead of just proposing to pack even more unaffordable homes in the city. Uh, business like this also attracts help of local, to help, um, the local economy by providing recurring businesses for caterers, artists, local floral shops, restaurants, et cetera. Um, you know, and absolutely they can and will use the extra work. Um, and it helps McCall just maintain the great city that it is. I know the first thing people think about with tra- with this is traffic and noise. Um, you know, though with proper management, and from the proposal I've seen, I really feel like this will be properly managed. Um, and conforming to the noise ordinance requirements, um, that the city requests, realistically, I don't think noise is going to be quite the problem that it's, it's been built up to be, um, with some other, um, testimony I've heard. It's, uh, also not a unique issue and it's managed all over the city, um, regarding noise. So, yeah, the applicant also seems to have a very good plan to help address these items with the ongoing operation of this property. Um, and like I said before, it's frequent, it's, uh, important to understand the frequency realistically of these events will be held. Um, the project's proposal, uh, also proposes to provide a lot more landscaping, um, from what I've seen from the landscape plan, which will create a, a pretty dense visual buffer when all those improvements are completed, um, to actually mask a lot of the light pollution that I, that I've heard mention of. Um, it also, this parcel also says immediately, almost immediately off of Boyston on Rio Vista. Um, and with Rio Vista not continuing through, it's, it seems to me that there'll be virtually no additional traffic generated in the residential neighborhood. And from my understanding, Boyston's actually desired to kind of become, um, a, a main thoroughfare to get through Boy- or through, um, McCall, to reduce traffic from going through the mid, to the downtown area. So, I appreciate you listening to me, appreciate the time.
Can I get this one?
Yes.
Hi, the previous caller, or caller, um, could you clarify, are you the same Austin Edwards that is the, uh, stormwater engineer on this application?
Did we lose him?
You. Can you repeat what you said?
Could you confirm that you, if you are the same Austin Edwards as was the, uh, engineer for the application?
Yes, yes, I did read your plan.
Thank you.
All right, um, we've got one more number on my list, uh, four oh eight, five six nine, nine nine two zero. He's still on there, you may need to unmute yourself possibly. Again, four oh eight, five six nine, nine nine two zero.
Hello?
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 We can hear you.
Uh, John and Lori Stumplinger, two oh seven Ernesto. Um, kind of on the corner of, uh, Rio Vista and Ernesto. I wasn't going to say anything until that last caller called in because, uh, kind of, uh, I'm kind of glad the other guy called him out on that. I'll just make one point, um, and I'm kind of fired up about this now. I was fine until that guy called. But I was at the meet and greet, the neighborhood meeting, and I posed the question, what about alcohol? And who's going to be responsible for that? Are, are you going to have liquor lines? And they said, no. And then Bob Joyce, Bob Joyce said, "In California, the event center is responsible" for problems with alcohol.
You mute them? Go ahead.
Responsible, this is in California. So maybe that may or may not bode to the character of the applicants, I don't know, but we are strongly opposed to this. That's all I have to say.